Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this January 6th meeting of the planning, the Wareham Planning Board. This is an off-cycle meeting that was planned to go through some things before the special town meeting that is happening one week from tonight. My name is Jane Gleason. I'm the vice chair and I will be the acting chair for the evening as the chair Carl Schultz had a previous engagement that was scheduled long in advance. So we'd like to, I'd like to start with calling the meeting to order and taking roll call.
Mike Baptiste, you.
Julie Moran here.
And Jane Gleason here.
I know, sorry.
And the first item on the agenda is preliminary business and approval of some meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes of November 25, 2024, December 9, 2024, and December 16, 2024. We're going to separate them and take a vote to adopt them. The first one, November 25, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. And the December 9, 2024 meeting notes, I would like to hold until our next meeting to adopt them as Chairman Schultz has not had a chance to see them and would like to do so before we adopt them. And the remaining one, December 16, 2024, is perhaps erroneously on this agenda. It was an executive session and as such, there will be no meeting notes of it, at least for the public record. The next item on the agenda is item 1224, Forty Great Neck Development LLC. It's an A and R at Forty Great Neck Road. And so, has everybody gotten papers on that?
Mm-hmm.
Very comfortable, Jane. We can't see the audience over them, unfortunately. If you could state your name and...
Brian Grady with GAF Engineering.
And in deference to Carl Schultz, could you spell your last name?
G-R-A-D-Y.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. We're here tonight with an A and R plan to create one lot out of 10-plus acre parcel of land on Great Neck Road. This is within the MR30 zone. The lot we're proposing has in excess of the required frontage on Great Neck Road, has 31,702 square feet. Went a little bit over on the area because there's an ancient way behind us. It's all overgrown, but it is an ancient way, so we excluded that area from the lot area. I spoke with Ken about that. It's not addressed clearly in your bylaw, but Ken felt that that was the safe thing to do, throw a little extra area on there to account for the, for the ancient way. There's no wetlands on the lot. It's entirely upland. It's not in the flood zone, and we have the required area and frontage.
One thing that I neglected to add, I am going to recuse myself from any discussion as a direct abutter.
Okay.
Mike?
Looks like it's part, I'm looking at the deed, so it's part of a large, a large, a large lot.
Correct. There's 9.9 acres remaining.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. I've looked at it really, I don't have any further questions.
I have no comment. I make a move for vagal action.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Jane Gleason abstain.
Thank you.
Sounds easy.
Do you have the milers this evening or do I pick those up tomorrow or...
Did the box come with you?
Oh, no.
Okay.
We don't have them.
We don't have the milers with us.
I will, I'll get them before our meeting concludes and we'll have them signed by you tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So the next three items on our agenda tonight are three articles that are going before the special town meeting, and we will be opening public hearings on each one of them individually for discussion. We'll start with the board having some discussion and then we'll open it up to the public.
We need to read a notice.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
And we'll open each one individually and close them individually. So, just so everybody knows what the procedure is. So the first item is an article to allow solar fields only in the Business Development Overlay District to see if the town will vote to limit large-scale ground-mounted solar installations to the BDOT or the Business Development Overlay District in the town zoning bylaws. So I'd like to open that article for discussion. Can I get a motion to open that?
Yep. Motion to open discussion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie. Julie Moran, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, any board comments on, assuming that everybody has seen the maps and that the consideration is being given to solar being, new, new applications for large-scale ground-mounted solar projects being located in the Business Development Overlay District, which is a district that straddles Route 25 and runs along Route 495 northerly to the town border and then south of 25, I guess, that's 25 at that point, to the backside of Route 28.
Right. It's really kind of two, two parcels, if you will.
Correct.
Right.
And that area is, there are no single, no, there are no residences in that area, no single-family or multifamily residences in that area. It's pretty much limited to a number of Cranberry Bogues and associated accessory buildings or commercial industrial-type buildings.
And Jane, I think you'd, you'd clarified for everyone that this only applies to new applications.
This is not, not relative to any pending applications.
Josh, did you want to add anything from your presentation to the board last?
You would just give my, it, my trial, my computer's having some technical difficulties right now. It's not user error, it's highly laptop error. No, I'm not sure, but it sounds good. So Jane, I think you did a good job explaining where the Business Development Overlay District is. I've heard a couple of questions prior to tonight's meeting that will probably come out by tonight's meeting, so anticipation of those. To the extent of my knowledge, there is no town-owned property located within the BDOT. It does abut and include portions of an environmental justice community, which, when my computer finally finishes uploading, I'll be able to overlay that layer for you. And again, this is, this is a proposal for a solar district that is highly, I'll call it unregulated in town. So, you know, the goal of this is to prevent solar from running rampant around town.
Right. We'd very much like to be able to limit future projects to a confined area in town rather than allowing it to happen anywhere in town.
Yeah. And help mitigate some of the environmental aspects such as clearcutting, necessary clearcutting associated with, excuse me, solar farms, large solar farms.
Yes.
Also surrounding neighborhoods. If you look at Square Line, they have one behind it, one across the street proposed, and one to the west of it proposed. So they would have it basically all around them.
They're sort of fit into residential areas and areas that are, are pretty sensitive environmentally.
And based on some of the different towns I've looked at, this, this is not unusual to try to limit and congregate, if you can, so, large-scale solar farms.
There you go. Now I've added the, that EJ layer, the environmental justice communities layer, and the, the environmental justice community that is partially within the BDOT is environmentally justice described based on income.
Josh, how many acres approximately do the two, the two different areas constitute, you know, left hand?
Describe the two different areas because right now, it's just the Business Development Overlay District that we're talking about.
That's what I mean, yeah. Yes, that's what I'm referring to.
So what's the, the yellow district?
Yes, let's call it the yellow district. Thank you.
Give me a second to do the math, but it's a crazy large area in square feet.
Oh, okay. You don't have to answer right this minute.
No, it shouldn't be hard.
You can zoom in so we can see exactly where it is?
I'd love to. One second.
You can see where 25 and 495 run sort of diagonally across the site, and then you can see where 195 comes in and the whole ramp system that's sort of on the right-hand lower side, mid to lower side of the yellow area.
So it's just shy of 1,300 acres.
It's just, you can see it, we can't see it. I've even had trouble...
Can you not see it?
...to map that, how to tell where the, how the roads are.
Okay. Yeah, we can zoom in. Yeah.
...that's bigger and the roads actually notified, not only here, but for the town meeting, because you're asking us to approve this, hey, areas where you can talk about what the road names are.
Yeah.
We can't really tell.
Okay. I can go and point at it, but I don't think that that helps for people who are watching.
So the Business Development Overlay District is described in the zoning bylaws that it requires the description. It's actually at the end of the zoning bylaws, I believe. But, yeah, let me zoom in and we can give a quick description of what roads we're looking at.
So there's Charlotte Furnace.
Yep. To the west, we have Charlotte Furnace up until you hit 495. The easterly side, we have Farm-to-Market Road.
And Tihonet Road.
And then as we move south, as we move south, it runs through a couple of different parcels. It's not actually delineated by Cranberry Highway, but as we run south, people should be familiar with, this is the Rosebrook Development. This has the Hotel, Chili's, Saga, Five Guys. So it's, it's just north of Cranberry Highway behind a few of those parcels. And then it, it runs all the way up to the town line on the northern portion.
And you said it's 1,300 acres, Josh?
Just barely shy, 1,295 and a half, maybe?
Okay, thank you.
So are the, are there highways clear to people looking at it? The superhighways, the 495, 25, the interchange for 195?
If anybody wants to get up and go and look at it...
Yeah, feel free.
Clearly, feel free.
If you like, I can stand up.
So the purple's 195?
Yes. The purple coming up this way is 195, and then the one that comes diagonally is 495 and 25.
I'm going to try to do this without being blinded. So running west to east, we have 495.
And it turns into 25, doesn't it turn into 25 right there?
And then running north to south is 195. I'll try to point out a few things that people may be... Josh, can you spin the mic your way? Okay, so here is the Rosebrook Development again, where you have Saga, Five Guys, Chili's, all those things. This is Charlotte Furnace Road.
Farm-to-Market and Tihonet is the easterly.
Right.
Can you trace 195, please?
So this is the interchange between 495 and 195, and 195 runs south.
Yes, and how far south does that really get?
So this is Cranberry Highway. This is 28 here, so it's just north of 28.
So 28 is the exit off of 195?
So for your reference, this is...
Wareham Crossing.
Thank you. I was going to throw cranberry something in there.
That works.
Yeah.
So are there any other questions about the location?
Do you want a motion to open the public hearing?
That's it.
A motion to open the public hearing, is that in order?
Didn't we open it already?
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'd like to open this to public comments. If anybody would like, has a question or a comment, they can come up and tell us your name, and please spell your name for our note takers, and tell us what you think.
Donna Fox Reuben, Weeby Antic Shores in Wareham. Can you explain to me, please, who the beneficiary of these solar farms are? I'm an advocate of the solar energy, but who, is it serving the town's needs? Does it serve the resident needs? How does that work?
The beneficiaries of these solar farms are the, the contractors who would come in and put the solar farms in town.
And the landowners.
And the landowners, correct. And oftentimes, the, the two are separate entities where someone will come and lease the land from the property owner. It's often that the, the owner of the solar farm is not the owner of the property. At least, that's been our experience with the solar farms that have come before us, and they've been numerous. And currently, they can apply to put solar farms anywhere in the whole town, and we're trying to rein that in a little bit.
Okay, so we don't really gain the benefit of the energy produced. This is just regulating where we can put them.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, I'm Nancy Garvey. I live at 25 Faring Hill Road, G-A-R-V-E-Y. I work at Lowe's. I'm a retired environmental toxicologist, and then I was a teacher for 20 years. I work at Lowe's in the Garden Center, and I know there are pilot programs down south where solar companies lease the roofs from flat box stores. We have so much potential, so many potential locations for, for solar panels, for which I'm an advocate, but not in forests. You, you mentioned cutting down forests. It makes no sense to me to do that.
We are doing what we can to get that to stop, to stop the clearcutting. We're very unhappy about the clearcutting that's gone on for the number of solar farms that have come before us. In fact, that's one of the, the prime reasons that we're, we have our hair standing on end.
All right. Has anyone entertained the thought of leasing box door?
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And over parking. If it goes over parking, it creates, it, it reduces heat island effect, it keeps your car dry, it keeps your car shaded, it's, there are all kinds of reasons to do that. But we can't, we can't force the hand of the people who are putting in the solar farms. We can only do it to the extent that our bylaws allow us to.
Okay.
We are doing what, everything that we can to stop the clearcutting.
All the countries put them over highways, too.
Yeah, there are lots of, lots of possible...
And power lines.
Yeah.
Which are already cut and cleared. One, one other comment, the building has to be built to support the solar panels. You can't just put it on top of Lowe's. Has to be built to support all the material.
Well, and I'm, I'm going to add something to that.
Okay.
And that is that, and this is just my personal observation, and that is that the idea of putting solar on a roof does require that the building underneath stays put for the duration of when you've got the solar panels up there. And I think that one difficulty for property owners is that to tie them up, tie their building up for 25 years, which is pretty much the, the general thinking of what the longevity of those panels is, is, is a tough ask. So that's, there's one difficulty for a property owner in, in accepting that. I mean, for that, I'm an advocate of putting it over parking instead of on roofs, so that you're not hogtying the, the property owner. But it's also a situation where you've got to get the, the property owner and the developer of the solar panels, the owner of the solar panels, to cooperate, and that right there is a hurdle. So, so I think it's a great idea, and I'm, I'm with you all the way. I think that that's, that's a far better solution, over parking, over buildings, places that are already developed, better place to put solar. But there are hurdles to get through to do that. And we are advocates of doing that and surmounting those hurdles, but...
So will the hurdles be addressed at the town meeting?
No. This, this, the only thing that's being addressed right now is to reduce the amount of area in the town where solar panels can, or solar farms, large-scale ground-mounted solar farms can be located from the entire town. We'll have to go through an approvals process, but the entire town down to a limited area. And this will be for future projects, not for ones that are currently before us. We can't change the regulations mid-stride, mid-stride with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Donna Fox Reuben. Further that lady's comment, I think another obstruction possibly to doing flat-roof solar installations is New England weather. We're already challenged with the weight of ice and snow, so it might be a very practical solution in environments where snow is not as big a concern as it is here, but we've had storms here where the snow itself is collapsing buildings. So if these buildings aren't built to accommodate the load of snow and solar, we could be creating a whole new set of issues.
Yeah.
So unless we change building code to anticipate that, too, it might not work in the New England area. Although, weather is changing, we may be wintering in New England.
I made that point earlier. The building has to be designed to, to carry the load. So it's not just going to be put on a Lowe's that's already there.
Yeah. It makes me wonder about solar installations on homes, too. But most homes have pitched roofs, so...
Right, right.
And those are, those are more building code issues and not, not something that zoning can really deal with, but thank you for...
I think also the challenge is that in Wareham, we have some very large buildings, but not that many. And it is a challenge, if you have a small building, a small commercial building, to engage in creating a solar array. So if we could put it on parking lots or any of the other opportunities, I think that that would be wonderful. We certainly would welcome roof, parking, anything other than...
Over already-developed properties.
Right, properties, right.
Yes.
I think, too, that this district was one that we were interested in because you don't have neighborhoods in the middle of the district, and that was very important to us. So you don't have some of the potential issues that we've seen in other solar projects here in town.
Would you like to come up and...
Wait, wait.
Can you wait until you're in front of the microphone?
Wendy O'Brien. I live right up at Tahanet Pond. That's the pond right there in the center. There are two resident areas there. One has 17 homes, and I think the other one has about 30 homes, so we will be directly impacted. There's a lot of residents in there, so I don't think it's fair to say that.
Okay.
The other thing is that, you see that land that's not highlighted on Tahanet Pond? I know for a fact that there's developments in play for solar in those spaces, too. So the line probably needs to go right to Tahanet Pond. I think they're negotiating that, and if it fails in court, then the whole thing is going to be gone.
So which, can you, can you go point to where you're thinking that you'd like to see the line moved to? It's a little tough to get there, sorry.
I know this is the, the line with the...
The power line.
It's the power line.
Yeah.
Right? So all of this, all of this is proposed to be solar.
Correct.
Pretty much will go, right? So you need to go like this.
No, we don't, we, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid. And what we're, what we're trying to avoid is having the whole town open to solar. The projects that have already been approved are, we can't do anything about those.
Basically, right now, from Makepeace Village all the way up to Frogfoot Bog and then east is already before us. So we can't change the law that they've already applied for. The laws that they're applying under already exist, that's already before us, so we can't change anything.
I think you're misleading the public in thinking that we're limiting it. I mean, do we know before you propose, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but do you, do you know how much forests we're going to lose to this proposal? I mean, and, and who owns that land? It's Makepeace land, I'm pretty sure.
Yep.
So Makepeace is getting the benefit of that whole area being developed and destroyed.
Yeah, and there's nothing that we can do about it.
If I, I want to answer you directly. Currently, the zoning bylaw allows for solar to be developed anywhere in Wareham. This new section limits it to only being developed there.
No, it won't, because the law on the books now for the state says that it can be put anywhere in any, in behind residential areas. So even if you put this forward, the chances of the AG approving it are very slim based on, they're going to, it's in conflict with the current law that's on the books. So you're going to waste a whole other year, they're going to shoot it down, and then we're going to have the whole thing developed anyway, where we could have put something forward that maybe the AG will approve. So we think it's a rush. I think you're rushing into this, and we need, has legal reviewed, the town legal reviewed this proposal? Because this is what, the third proposal that we're making, that two, the last two they've shot down? Like, to me, I'm not a lawyer, but common sense says they're not going to approve that. They're not going to approve this straight. And I asked, I asked a friend who's an attorney, and, and they're like, I don't know of any, has any other town got a law on the books like this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tahanet has one that has a similar solar zoning district to this size.
And they've, they've put a district in and said you're limiting to it, and they stuck with that?
There's a number of towns.
You have to understand, the state wants to allow them anywhere. Anywhere, any, they basically want us out of the picture so the state can say... Anywhere, any, they basically want us out of the picture, so the state can say, put them anywhere. That's what they want to do. We're trying to limit it, whether the AG says yes or no, we don't know, but we're trying. The state, right now, has before the minute has passed that they want to take all zoning solar away from local towns and cities and have it be state mandated only. That's what they want to do. We're trying to make it better.
Pop down, right?
We're trying.
Yes.
They have done it.
Yep.
Right, in November, right?
Yep, yep, and we're trying to get ahead of it.
So I think it, I might, can you just kind of putting out a welcome mat as far as, you know, take our forests?
I think we're doing the opposite.
I think, I beg to disagree with that. I think that we've been trying very hard to, to limit the amount of clear cutting that is allowed. And as you pointed out, the state is, is not being very helpful in, in our achieving that. But we are doing everything that we can, and this is, this is an effort to limit the amount of the, the locations where solar can go.
And clear cutting can occur.
And, and clear cutting can occur.
It doesn't matter that the 75 homes that are abuttingness are going to be just, just, their, the whole area is going to be destroyed. This whole area is going to be destroyed.
You're, you're already in that position.
Everybody's in that position.
Right.
Right.
So now it's a definite that, that, that's where it's going to go, in a cluster. And there's not going to be, all that forest is going to be gone.
That doesn't mean that, this does not mean that everything there is going to go to solar. This just says that if you want to put a solar farm in, it's got to go in this area, but it's got to work around what's already there, like Cranberry Boggs and.
Well, we know that they'll put it on Cranberry Boggs, because they have.
They're experimenting with that, yep.
There are experimentations going on with that, and.
I think it's, I mean, on the, the state respects the fact that we're trying to keep forests cut down. And this is kind of a welcome to go ahead and do it, in my, in my opinion. Why don't we put it in, in the, just that business district and see if they approve it? I mean, if the wording on the, on the, on the bylaw meets, doesn't conflict with.
So can you say that again, to put, to put solar where?
Just on the, in the industry distractions, put solar on the roofs, put it into the business section.
Put it in the power lines.
That's pretty much what we're trying to do by doing this. That's a, that's an overlay district that allows development for business development. It's, that's, that's the name of it, which means that it's, it's open to development for all kinds of industry. It's, it was situated there from my recollection because of the confluence of three highways, so 25 and 495 being considered two highways, and 195. So because of their proximity to transportation, that's where this business development district went. So it's subject to that as well.
Well, why don't you narrow it then, to take out the forest that's there, that whole swath in the middle, that's forest? Why, why, why give them 1,300 acres?
Well, right now, they get, what's the area of the town?
But if we, but if we put it forward with less acreage than you're saying now, what's the difference?
The fear that the AG doesn't approve it like previously.
Because the state is, is advocating for solar to be put in.
And I.
The town has already given up enough land, and I think.
That's what we.
We couldn't agree with you more.
We totally agree with that.
The fear is that, I think, previous attempts at solar districts, the concern from the AG was that they were too small.
What was that? I mean, I, I can follow up with you and find out those facts, like where we have towns that have districts, how much square footage they put in.
Yeah, please come down to my office.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please, go ahead. Could you identify yourself and spell your last name?
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, you've got your hand up.
Oh, my name is Jim Munise, M U N I S E.
And.
Got that?
Did you have?
Yeah, we do, thank you, Mr. Munise.
Some comments on what the discussion is?
Yeah, I've done a little bit of, I looked into this a little bit, and I, I think it could be an issue of spot zoning where primarily one entity gets the benefit of being able to do solar. That's one of my concerns. I also looked at, as other people had referred to, what else could we do? Well, what would happen if we took the southern part of the B-Dod, which is an overlay in itself, over R-60? And, so that would be from 25 south through 28, then included the industrial parks in the commercial retail area. So now you have a mix of both developable land and land that has been developed. And you could also create a second solar area up along Route 28 in east Wareham. And now we're stripped, but a lot of parking lots. We're, we're looking to create solar areas and saying, this is one area, this is another. Not to say that, well, you can't put them on a roof because it doesn't carry load, or this or that. We just have to have areas we're showing that we're, we're trying to develop the solar in those areas. I think that's important to keep in mind. So I won't, I won't beat this to death, those are my ideas. I say move it south, leave part of it in the B-Dod, take part of it out, include the already developed areas of commercial and industrial, and also up in east Wareham along 28. Thank you.
So Josh, perhaps you can fill in this detail. What's the size limitation on a large scale ground mounted solar? Installation.
Yeah. And then.
I mean, I think that the state is going to, going to turn this down if the area that we're proposing doesn't have any parcels that are even that minimum size that are available.
In megawatts?
It's, I think that there's also a, an area basis, if I recall correctly, not just a megawatt threshold.
So this, just so you know, these two areas I described tap out total around 1,200 acres. So it's comparable in size if you add the two. And it allows many different individuals the opportunity to maybe do something. The site of solar on already developed areas does not offend me. So I mean, that's just my pitch on this and my, my take. I'm a little worried about the spot zoning. We've got an overlay over an overlay, and one beneficiary primarily as the landowner anyhow. I think we should open it up a little, include the areas that have been disturbed, and go from there. But thanks again.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I want to say that I'm opposed to solar going on, on already developed sites. I think that's a great idea. I was just questioning whether, what constitutes a large scale, in, with capital letters, large scale ground mounted solar installation? Because there's a size limitation, there's a threshold that you have to be over for it to be that large scale qualification. And if the area that you're talking about doesn't even have any sites, developed or undeveloped, that are large enough to accommodate that size of an installation, then the state is probably going to say, no, that doesn't work. Because I think the state is looking for a place where large scale can happen, which is something that's different for the, for the power companies to deal with than the small stuff that is, say, on somebody's house. So, anyway, just, I'm sort of thinking out loud.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, one at a time, obviously. Could you introduce yourself and spell your name for us?
Sure, my name is Denise Wolk, the last name is spelled W-O-L-K.
Thank you.
I'm currently the chairperson of Wareham's Alternative Energy Committee. But I also was a part of the solar bylaw rewrite back in 2021, 22. And I have a little bit of insight on some of the questions that you had, if I could be allowed to share some of that information.
Absolutely, please go ahead.
So the proposed solar bylaw that we introduced in 2022 is Article 5, Section 590. Attempted to limit the size of large ground mounted solar to no more than 5.0 megawatts. Prohibited the development of large ground mounted solar in centers of environmental areas and wetlands, protected spaces, national state historic registered properties, priority habitat, core habitat. It also took into consideration social justice communities and also Native American community resources, which we have a number of in Wareham. It limited grading earth and earth removal as part of it, because that was a concern. It required that they use non-toxic materials for poles to mount the panels and, and other limits. That was actually passed at the town meeting back in 2022. But I believe the Attorney General shot part of it down. I, I, I'm not completely familiar, I kind of fell out of, out of the loop for a little while. But again, we worked very hard for a couple of years, and Nancy McHale chaired that bylaw committee and worked, led us to work very hard to craft something that would be amenable. And tried, the, the primary effort there was to limit it, to places that had already been developed, the kinds of things that you're already talking about. Some of the things that we learned as part of our study is that, in fact, mounting on large buildings can be a challenge, not just for the snow load, but a lot of the large buildings in town also have what they call a floating roof system. So it really can't manage the, the load. But, you know, one of the things you could think about is when you're providing building permits for new building, requiring them to be able to have solar installation on top. That's a building code thing that we could put in place. We also looked at overlay districts and trying to limit it to previously developed areas. And, you know, there was some reception of that by the state. But I'm kind of in agreement with Josh in that, you know, while the state really wants to push solar, I think it's important for the town to push back. I think it's important for us to have some kind of opportunity to voice our concerns about our community. And this is one way to do it. So while it might get shot down by the Attorney General, it, or, or some of the other folks at the state, it's still worth putting a stake in the ground and saying that we don't want to become a solar ghetto. You know, I also, to address one of the previous speaker's concerns, one of the things we were really looking hard at in the solar bylaw study committee was trying to limit the amount of clear cutting that was done. And again, the, the bylaw that was passed by the town in 2022 limited the amount of clear cutting that could be done in any area. So I, I, I would suggest that you revisit that. And again, it is, it was Article 5, Section 590 is the bylaw that we rewrote. And with that, I will cede the floor.
Thank you very much. Yes, that, that section of the bylaw is what we've been able to apply to projects that have come before us recently, since, since that bylaw was passed. I honestly, I don't keep all of the numbers in my head, but we, we look at that every time we look at a new project, and that, those are the standards by which we, we assess the project. So. Anybody else in the audience wanting to? Oh, you had one more person online, sorry, go ahead. Hello, Annie, could you state your name, introduce yourself, and spell your name, please?
Katie?
Can she hear us, Joan?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, you know, it's a whole new format. All right, so I said that I was feeling a lot of chest pressure because there's so many issues that in this small conversation have been brought out and cursedly addressed, or the, the answers to not known, the questions not fully explored. And I think this is such a serious decision to put this before a vote next week where so many people are in the winter funk or the post oppression of the election, whatever, holidays. And, you know, I think, what was it, a little over 100 people showed up at the last town meeting? I'm not sure if that's accurate, but they're dwindling. So I, I'm a, a teacher by trade, as well as an artist, and, and I think that there's so much education that needs to take place before this is proposed. And I'm very clear about the, as the Supreme Judicial Court's decision in the, the Waltham case, where they said Waltham could not restrict the development of the solar in a neighboring town and could not prohibit the trucks from going in to build in the neighboring towns through their neighborhoods, through the Waltham neighborhoods. And the argument was, we've got solar all over town, we've got it on roofs here, we've got it in the SCJ, S Supreme Judicial Court said. But, you know, all told, it's just like 2% of the area, something like that. So there is the amount, but the critical issue, and I thought that that's what they brought to bear with the turning down, our, our last solar proposal was that there was no argument for the health, safety, and welfare of the townspeople. I didn't see it anywhere, and I've talked a lot about it. Here, we're looking at this huge yellow swath, 1,300 acres, largely owned by AD Makepeace. And the issue of strip mining of sand hasn't even been discussed, and we all know that's part of the plan. And it's wrought enormous destruction. It's not clear cutting, it's uprooting, strip mining, sometimes 20 feet down, making a bundle, dragging the stuff through town, silica everywhere, you know. I'm not being dramatic, I think I'm being understated in the damage that's been done. So 1,300 more acres for these folks, and where is the word aquifer, for starters? You know, we, we're sort of getting accustomed to using that word. And we're sort of getting accustomed to thinking, well, pure water, and we have it, and it's being despoiled. And not only that, we know more and more about toxic infiltration of these tiny particles of plastics and PFAS and the whole thing. We have a new representative that took.
It's not our resource. The forest is its own, and the inhabitants are their own. And we have got to stop this there here for our manifest destiny or something. I'm just going to read what was sent out by CL, oh, come on, Community Land and Water. This is a list of this, the opportunities that this swath allows Makepeace when already there's a distraction is Tonit Road, 50 acres destroyed with strip mining and solar. Farm to Market, 40 acres destroyed with strip mining and solar. Rosebrook, about 15 acres destroyed with strip mining and solar. Charlotte Furnace, 70 acres destroyed with other with strip mining and solar. And the cumulative is, you know, hundreds of acres, and then 1,300 more? I mean, this is like, if we're going to talk about health, safety, and welfare, we're going to talk about water is numero uno. It's the municipal's mandate. Number one, we cannot live without clean water. And so many towns are trying to, and people are getting sicker and sicker, and the wells can't be filtered. And after the fact, it's a bust. You know, I think the solar companies count on the fact that now they're using nanoparticles. It takes a good while for nanoparticles to manifest themselves in some testing mechanism that probably hasn't even been, you know, designed yet. And the chemical people just keep staying ahead of it, staying ahead of it, staying ahead of it, and raking in the cash. So this is a huge problem, and it's not only our problem, it's a national problem. Now we have, you know, the EPA could be trashed, and et cetera, et cetera. We have got to, like, fight on this. We can't just say, oh, well, you know, health, safety, and welfare, they want size at the state. I don't know what they want. I don't know what this law actually means. Are they still proponents of health, safety, and welfare? Because we are making progress on that. We are talking about what the vandalism of the the environment by developers of of housing projects and 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 solar are doing. And a lot of this is just irreversible. We've got two.
So Annie, if I can, if I can interrupt.
Yeah, sure.
I think that you're making a number of good points, and it's a number of good points that I think a lot of us feel the same way. I think that this article is one, albeit small, step that we are trying to take to limit something that we think is is not a great thing for the environment of our town among, you know, the state and the world. But I think that we've we're we're trying to eat the elephant in the room and trying to do it one bite at a time. And and we we hear what you're saying about all of these issues, but we can't we can't tackle them all at once. So this is this is us trying to take a step, what we like to think is in the right direction, by limiting where solar can go in our town.
I want I want to ask, I understand, I, you know, I listen to all of you, and I respect all of you. And this thing thinks this decision may seem so out of proportion without the background and the education for townspeople to really know what is being spoken about. And why the rush job? Why, you know, like, just the short period of time before the vote? We're just discussing it in a week from, seven days from now, we're going to vote on it. And it seems like it's a much bigger, the elephant is, it's true, there is an elephant. But once you take a bite that allows 1,300 acres to be developed by solar, and, you know, looks like a lot of natural land and waterways, you know, all those bogs are waterways, and if they put solar panels, the whatever comes off the panels in terms of potential toxins is going right into the food chain, into the berries, and then into the water. These are big issues. So why the rush?
Jane, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I I'm afraid that we are getting lost on what this is, the goal of this actually Ignoring these, this number seven, solar is currently allowed everywhere located in the green area by permit. What we are trying to do is limit where it is allowed to that section in yellow. So anywhere not in yellow would say there is no solar allowed. We are not give this this proposal, this yellow area, is not a welcome mat to say, hey, come and build solar exactly right here, like, we want you to come build solar here. This is a, hey, we want, if there is going to be development of solar, for it to only happen in this yellow area.
I understand that, Josh. Thank you for reiterating that. I do understand that.
I can show you.
I understand the point. But are there SPRs for the projects if they're, when if they go into this, or is it, they don't have, really, they don't have many requirements?
This is, this is not an open approval for solar projects in here. It would still require the same process that every solar project has come before the planning board for.
Do you think that's really true? I mean, will the state allow that, that we can still, you know, talk about degradation of panels, infiltration of plastics, and waterways, and habitat loss?
You can, Annie. That's still the conversation that will happen, just like the conversation that's been going on for all.
Well, that's an important point. That's a very important point.
None of this is as of right. Let's, this is not an as of right opportunity. It is subject to our zoning bylaws, to health, safety, and welfare, the state exception. So, and met all the same questions that we ask and will continue to ask of any development that is pending before us, we would ask of this, of anyone who's developing there.
Well, that's, that's important. Now, there was another chunk that included to hone upon and all the big green blob on the colored map. If this is not acceptable by the AG, the, is that going to be the next step, or we're going to hit that when we come to it, or is it off the boards for now?
We are currently not discussing that at all.
Okay.
The goal of, the goal of what we are proposing is the area highlighted in yellow as of right now. If they, if the AG comes back and says, we're not a fan of the size that you've presented, I think it's definitely a discussion that needs to be had about expanding it. And we've heard great comments from Mr. Muniz tonight about potential areas for that. But but right now, this was a area that was designed for business development, and it seems like an appropriate place if we are going to site solar anywhere and have it contained. It seems like an appropriate place for it to be.
So do you think that this time span is adequate for people to understand and really, because that that whole, it's going to have the same restrictions that we've been giving to other projects, but it's in a very, very much smaller area. And I agree with Mr. Muniz's statements about perhaps altering the configuration. You can't do that once it's been voted and it's on its way to be approved, right?
We can alter it while it's in that process, but we can definitely alter it at a, at another town meeting in the future, sure.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I I think there's a simple question that needs to be asked here. It is, where is solar limited to in the town of Wareham currently? Nowhere. Where are we trying to limit it to? The B D O D district.
And the the review questions and discussion that happened do remain unchanged. It's only the location. The the discussion will continue.
Right. And the planning board is only becoming more knowledgeable about solar and and things that they need to be asking and conditions that they need to be putting on these projects. You know, the the planning board has come a long way in the last, you know, it seems like a very short period of time that we've been dealing with solar.
Here, here, yes, I agree. So this is little Wareham for solar. It's still under, all that we've learned and the restrictions that remain, health, safety, and welfare, the aquifer is still a main topic. And this is, we're just looking at this area. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. And I think that helps the public.
This is anything but a Wareham for solar.
No, but I mean, it's, 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 the parameters have shrunk sizably. I mean, it's just like, there it is, yellow.
That's a great way to describe it.
Yes.
And just for visual reference for everyone, here, you can see these, this red layer that I've just added. These are already constructed solar fields in Wareham.
And they're pretty well scattered across the town, and that's what we would like to entail.
And these are already constructed. Does not include those that have pending permits, correct, Josh?
Correct. These are, these are what is physically on the ground that could be identified by aerial images.
And as an adjunct, preserving wildlife and forests are a main part of this. And we also have to take into mind all of the development that is also extremely destructive to our environment. So, you know, it's, it's a big, it still is a big, big issue, but you're right. That was very helpful, and thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Donna Fox Rubin. Can I try to summarize what I think I've learned tonight and see if this addresses the issue? There was a bylaw change into 2021. Currently, anybody who applies, you can only apply that regulation right now. All the very valid concerns that everybody has raised, without diminishing their importance at all, right now, anybody who applies for solar in this town can go anywhere in this town.
They have to go through that whole process.
Right. But they can go anywhere in the town.
Correct.
So while it may seem that we're rushing this decision, until we make this decision, we have no control, and these very real concerns will exist anywhere and everywhere in the town that someone wants to put solar.
That's correct. And we can, we will be able to, with this, we will be able to apply that same bylaw and regulations on solar, but only in that area.
Right. So my thought is, if we can, at least for now, limit it to an area, so we're not putting everywhere in the town at risk, that makes sense, especially if what you say, and I expect it would be accurate, we can always go back a second time and say, we want to do what Mr. Muniz said. We can do it in that area. We can always go back again. But if we don't limit it, right now, we have no control.
That's, that's right.
Other than, other than our bylaws.
Section 590.
Right. Tricia?
Let me see if I can get out of here before I.
Good luck.
I'm always surprised when I'm dancing. This is not dancing. I might be dancing out when we're done.
Just introduce yourself, Tricia.
Introduce yourself, yes.
Hi. Tricia Wuritz. I'm a citizen, and I live at 32nd Street. You know, I have to applaud all of you for the work you're doing. And I applaud you because I've seen this go through since 2020 now. So I don't know how many renditions I've seen go through and get spit out by the state it doesn't count, or maybe we can, this part. What in the name of God makes us think they're not going to just spit this out? What's the difference? When we sell it to them, what's the difference?
That there's precedent now. That's why the question was raised of why this is happening so quickly. Well, there's now precedent, so we we can say, you're letting it happen in these other towns that they limit location. We'd like to do the same thing. Solar is new to the state. It's new to all of us in this scale and this magnitude that we've been seeing. And I think that we need to work with the state to get regulations in place. And a lot of times, yes, it might have been shot down, and I think that's probably why it was not considered as a, something that we would take to the state and say, this is what we want to do. But I think if there's precedent set, you know, let's, let's ride on that.
I mean, we've talked here about educating the town citizens, and they need to be educated. But I don't know how you cross that barrier that the state needs to be educated. At what point do you bring the state to the point where their citizens actually matter to them versus money? And I don't know how you get that done. And I don't know if you can bundle that somewhere in this, but the state has got to be educated and buy into education. And if we don't do that as a, as a human race, I don't care what gets put in front of these people. I would really doubt anything happens. I would look if if there are towns that have passed approval where the state has said, okay, you can limit it. Do we have, I would encourage, if we don't have a spreadsheet done of every one of those towns, what percentage of their landmass has been approved to put in hold? What percentage has not? Where has, what, and what other attributes have been considered? Is the land that is being used in other towns over aquifers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So I think, well, the bylaw might be reasonable, but the harder piece is educating and selling the state. Never mind educating our citizens. I mean, a lot of our citizens have anywhere from 5% to 105% knowledge on this. But because if that, if that analysis isn't done, Miss spreadsheet, Miss magic spreadsheet, which I can't do them like you do, I think I gave up a long time ago. I don't see an approval coming to this unless there is an education and buy-in at the state, which means there's a whole bunch of work that has to be done to sell this. When I talked to this group some, a year ago or so, and talked about the product, the ultimate product, and so the ultimate product is, has to include selling the state in a way they can't say no.
I think, too, that also talking about what, how many farms have been approved within our town relative to others, that we have educated ourselves. I think we have a whole lot more education and knowledge than we had two years ago, and that we understand the impact of a solar farm. We understand the value as well, the net positive, and we understand the state's attitude around that. So I think it's important that we help them understand Wareham's profile, what Wareham has done relative to supporting solar. And this is just one more way that we can work with developers and with protecting our town at some level, helping support our town. This is just another tool.
When you do that spreadsheet, it has to include all the acres that are already developed, along with what the increase would be. But again, the state doesn't care what we've, whether we've educated ourselves. They don't care. They only care if they see what they get, what they want. And so we have to educate them in a way that turns the table on them.
Here's how I think you get to get their attention. You get every state rep and every senator for the towns over the aquifer to get together as a group and tell the state, are you going to bring a pipeline down from Quabbin or Wachusett if one of the lithium batteries explodes and the town has no more clean water?
That's part of the ultimate product.
And I think it's, it's numbers, if you have all this, is it seven or nine, Nancy?
Nine.
Nine? Nine towns are above, above the solar, above the aquifer. How we get their attention is every rep, every senator that represents those nine, those nine towns gets together and said, we need to talk. Because if a town says, and this is something that, it's, it's politics, but if we say no to the state, what they do is they start cutting our state aid. All the grants and all the stuff that we get above, the money we get from the state, they start taking back. It's, it's, it's bad news, but it's politics. That's what happens.
That's why I'm saying we have, we have to educate the state to the point where they don't even know they're being educated. But it has to be from, here's what it means to you. So let's just talk about the aquifer. Let's say we end up polluting three towns. And let's talk about what the
our state aid. All the grants and all the stuff that we get above, the money we get from the state, they start taking back. It's, it's, it's bad news, but it's politics, that's what happens.
That's why I'm saying, we have, we have to educate the state to the point where they don't even know they're being educated, but it has to be from, here's what it means to you. So let's just talk about the aquifer. Let's say we end up polluting three towns. And let's talk about what the lawsuits against the state are going to be to cover all the deaths and all the sickness and all the claims because they went against keep taking care of their aquifer. I mean, so, you know, I, I really adore you guys. I mean, I'm in awe because I've seen the works here, I've seen a bunch of smart people involved, and I see you taking this on when you know it's already been taken on and not worked before. So it means it's got to be worked even harder, and think about working with educating the state on what's good for them.
The more applications that we present to them are articles that have passed town meeting that go to them. That's, that's one step, one type of education that we can bring to the state. This is what we're trying to do, this is what the residents of the town want, so there's, there's some of that. I'm sure there's...
Why is it good for you?
Right.
All of that.
Yep. There's more to it than that, obviously, but, but that's, at least it's, it's a part of that, education process.
So just quickly, there was a question about other towns that have created solar zoning.
Yeah.
It's going to be perceptively hard to visualize. This is a zoning overlay of the town of Falmouth. These red-yellow type areas are where they have zoned solar.
So there's, there's, there's something to, to Jim Moniz's comment about spot zoning. So if that's zoned, or is it zoned for solar, or?
Overlay.
It's an overlay.
So the yellows are, those are not where solar farms have gone in?
That's like a B-DOD.
I, I think there are solars, solar constructed there currently, or there...
That's not a particularly new bylaw either. I think it's about three years old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just to put some thought in, if you look at the, the size of what we're proposing, which is a community that already has something in place.
Which survived AG scrutiny.
Correct. But just something, in, you know, trying not to get too drawn out of the conversation we're having here tonight, I'd be more than glad to pull up some, some other community.
Yep.
But this is, this is one that I knew of and used in the thought of creating the B-DOD as a solar district.
So there are the, any other hands up? I see two in the back. You decide who goes first.
Eric. Hey, Eric, how you doing?
Just to be fair, we'll make you introduce yourself and spell your name. Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road. It's L-I-N-T-A-L-A.
Thank you.
A lot of good comments were made tonight. And of course, I think a lot of people know the board's been working really hard on this. And the new idea that had just come out, it's, it's been long in coming. I wish we'd started this idea thinking long ago. But that also puts us in a little bit of a predicament. I, I think the location, it makes a lot of sense to start somewhere. And I was a bit reluctant to think about, what's the rush? Maybe there is a, a time to think about if something is put into place right now to at least start. I think Jim Moniz had a, had a good idea to be also looking at other places that are acceptable to this. That's the other thing, they have to be acceptable. Even within this business district, are there, are their property sizes large enough to accommodate these solar? That's where the state might come in and just say it's not appropriate. The, which doesn't show here, but east of that, I know there was the green plan, so to speak, the green area, that's about just as much an acreage, it seems, as a possibility. The problem with that is, this whole section from the yellow east is a highly sensitive area, as some people have pointed out. It's a major thoroughfare for the water that goes from the north to the south into the bay. It's a wildlife corridor. And the aquifers there, the yellow is already over the aquifer. East of that is really over the aquifer.
Jim, this, this is the layer that you were...
Thank you.
Talking about before. You'll see that there is a jog in the, the top, the northeast section of that. That jog that runs diagonally kind of south to northwest is to keep it out of our wellhead protection area. But you are right, the aquifer does run under, I would say, 80% of Wareham. I mean, and again, that, we are allowing it everywhere. But sorry, continue.
No, that, thank you for putting that up there. What's in that area, and it's been pointed out earlier by another individual, this is great for what's coming up, this plan, and it'll, where new proposals would be restricted. And I like the idea of it's being, you know, a designated place is being, you know, pointed out, and hopefully acceptable to a lot of people. But in that green area and east of that, a lot of us already know, you've got already the proposals of 150 to Hona, 160 to Hona, 0 to Hona, 140 to Hona, all Makepeace. And if this is approved, which I think it, it should more than likely, then that's open to solar. The battle to the east of this, it's going to be a battle. This is Makepeace.
It's already before us, you know that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, and there are proposals, many proposals, and it, all of them come together in one giant cluster. These are things to think about. I know tonight's, we're focusing mainly on this business district, and I think that's right.
Can I interrupt for a moment? Josh, do you have a layer that shows the approved but not constructed? No, okay.
I don't have that.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Eric.
Basically, it's to the east of Tahona, from the village, all the way up to Frogfoot, Bog, take a right and hook in with a solar ray that's already there.
The red.
Yeah.
The red, so it's going to go all the way to Frogfoot, and then all the way to that. So that's already before us.
Yeah. So again, that's, you know, if this is approved, and then these others are approved, that's a lot of solar over, and over a lot of forested land. You know, these are just, you know, things to think about when we're talking, thinking about other area, other possible areas that are appropriate for the solar. East of that, I don't think is appropriate, but again, that's, we're up against a major force there, and that's coming down the road. So I think this is a great, you know, starting to do something with this. And I, I think possibly then this, this should happen to at least get the ball rolling, and we'll just deal with these other battles as they come up. But it is that whole area, even in, like I said, it's a major thoroughfare for the water, the aquifer, the wildlife. I don't think there's any real major appropriate area to try to designate, and trying to do that is going to be a problem. But if there are other small, other areas that can be appropriated, that are more suitable for development, I think we should also look into that. And not look at areas that are, you know, heavily forested to the east. You can't fight them all, you can't deny them all, I know that. But again, you know, that's, we'll be dealing with that one at a time, I gather, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Kathy?
Getting hot in here.
Lots of bodies.
Kathy Papalardo, P-A-P-P-A-L-A-R-D-O, Fairing Hill Road. I have two questions. One is, is Makepeace the only property owner in the proposed, in the B-DOD, or are there others?
That's a good question.
Because like, have property owners been notified?
It's possible that they're the only property owner. No, no one has been notified.
Is that okay to do that?
Oh, it's already been okayed once. We have a B-DOD that exists.
That's true. That's true. But you're changing its zoning.
We're just changing what's allowed in it. It already exists.
Okay. Second, second question. If this passes at town meeting next week, when does it go into effect?
After the AG has reviewed it.
If the AG looks at it.
And the AG takes their time. I mean, I'm sure they're buried, but they, we're on their schedule.
Right.
But it would, but if, if, if it passes through the AG, it is retroactively in effect to the time that it was voted in.
At town meeting.
At town meeting.
You know how long that can take.
I do, and that was, that was my question, because we know what happened the last time one of these was coming around.
So any, any solar projects that come before us after town meeting, if town meeting approves it?
Yeah.
Would pretty much be on hold, if I'm not mistaken, would be on hold until the AG's review was done and would be subject to the AG's review. So somebody could propose something elsewhere in town, but if this passes through the AG, they can't do it.
Correct. It would be on hold until the AG review.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to try to move forward.
Yeah, so we've got two more articles that are related to each other, but are probably as in-depth as this one, so...
Could I, can I close the hearing?
Yeah, I was going to offer to Ken if he had anything else to say.
Thank you. The reason for the B-DOD is because it has, it's a part of the ADM's, AD Makepeace's redevelopment proposal that they had previously for 1.3 million square feet of commercial and industrial space and 1,800 homes. This was only a part of it, of course, but this was, this was set, this was put in place because of that redevelopment concept. In place of that, the, the, the company, AD Makepeace, had submitted a letter to the town administrator in April of last year stating that they had abandoned that larger-scale development and were going to just have solar farms built. So this reinforces the, the events that have occurred setting this up. I think that because it's a, it's a complete district, that this is, this was legitimately approved by the AG previously, and all we're doing is changing the uses allowed in, within it. I, I also want to point out that large-scale solar farms are not prohibited everywhere in town. They are not permitted in the smaller residential zoning districts, the R-30 and MR-30, and of course, not within the, the village zoning districts. So it's not, it's not a complete overall allowance for these, these types of facilities.
I think in most instances, the development that's already in those districts would preclude large-scale ground-mounted solar anyway. Maybe I missed that.
And one of the reasons why I don't want them in the smaller lot sizes is because it, it makes it more visible as well, too.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
Sorry, just...
So I, so if you want to close the hearing and vote on this one, I would recommend that you vote for a recommendation to town meeting of the article as you see fit.
And make a motion to close the public hearing of this article.
Second?
All those in favor?
Mike Baptisteig.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Jane Gleason, aye. So we've closed the hearing. Now we need to vote on our recommendation to, to town meeting, and I, I recommend that it, that our, the motion be not a negative, so that we don't end up with a double negative. Just, it makes it easier. So anyway, I recommend it.
Make a motion to recommend this article to town meeting.
Second.
Simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, all in favor?
Mike Baptisteig.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So it goes to town meeting with our recommendation to proceed.
Correct.
Agreed.
So we're going to move on to Article 2, but I'd like to take a two-minute break.
Mm-hmm.
We could.
Second?
Second.
Did five minutes pass?
Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor of coming back into session?
Mike Baptisteig.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So the next item on the agenda is an article to put a moratorium on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, to see if the town will vote to put a one-year moratorium on ADUs while the state proceeds to write regulations and guidance on the Implementation of the Affordable Homes Act, options to, option to the next article. So I think, I think we'll take these separately.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'd like to open the public hearing, and looking for a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptisteig.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Mike, you second. Mike, second?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Jane Gleason, aye. So, Josh, you're going to do a presentation that discusses the difference between the town article and the state article. Is that correct?
I, I can, yes. It may have been better if you had done these in the other order then, just because if we're going to be discussing the differences between the two, maybe it makes sense to have the discussion.
Start with the, start with the law.
Okay, we can, we can reverse that. So we'll, we'll, we'll table the public hearing for the article on the moratorium, and open the public hearing. Can we have two public hearings open at once?
No.
I would table the one that's...
Table it, yeah. If it's tabled, then we can proceed.
Make a motion to table Article 2.
Correct.
Second. All in favor?
Mike Baptisteig.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason... Jane Gleason, aye. And so we will now.
Make a motion, we discuss Article Three.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Mike Baptiste.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So the article that we're discussing is the article to enact an accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Exclusively.
Exclusively, yes. To see if the town will vote to enact an ADU bylaw, given the act and, and draft regulations from the state, option to this, option to the previous article. So Josh was going to talk to us about the differences between the two bylaws. The state has written a bylaw allowing accessory dwelling units as of right, and the town is looking to enact a bylaw for accessory dwelling units that is a little bit more restrictive, and gives the town a little bit more control than just.
Sure. So what I did here is I'll pull up what is being proposed at town meeting, just so everyone can view it, and I'll kind of, I'll go through what we're proposing and maybe point out some differences that I see.
Okay.
Between what we're proposing and what they have, and I could actually, and I'll talk to maybe where you may see some differences as specifically, you'll notice that our definitions are, we have defined less than the state has. There's no real issue with us defining less, it may just be easier for applicants coming forward, looking at our zoning bylaw, to understand key definitions, but while they're already implemented in the state law, they, the definitions in the state law do supersede what our bylaw would have. So just because you don't see them in our definitions, they are still defined under state law, okay? So, and I think this presentation will probably be a little bit of what the state has kind of given in the presentation, because a lot of what we've proposed in the bylaw is very similar to the regulations that they've created. So maybe it makes most sense for me to just go through what we are presenting at town meeting, and either I can go through the whole article, or if people have questions as we go through, I, I don't really care which we do.
Yeah, okay.
So if anyone has like a pressing question for the place that we're at, feel, feel free to interrupt me.
It's chaotic.
But maybe less confusing.
Let's go.
You can give the presentation next time. Okay, so the state has enacted accessory dwelling units by right in zones that are already zoned for single-family residents. A few of the things that they have as restrictions, they've also identified in their definitions. So, you know, there are three key ones that they point out in their definition sect, section. It has to maintain a separate entrance, whether it be from outside or through an entry hall within the dwelling, but it has to meet the state building codes for safe egress. The accessory dwelling units, as they are being proposed, have a size limitation of nothing greater than 900 square feet, and it can be no greater than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling. So to give a little bit of an example of that, if you have a 1,800-square-foot or larger principal dwelling, you are able to build a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling. If you have a principal dwelling that is 1,000 square feet, you are limited to a 500-square-foot accessory dwelling. So the third section is they say that the municipality can create more strict regulations, but one of them cannot be that the primary or accessory dwelling units be owner-occupied. So the, the town cannot enforce that a property owner occupy either one of those. They, they do have a stipulation where they talk about short-term rentals. They define short-term rentals as only MLG Chapter 64G Section 1. Our definition of short-term rentals actually just expands on what the definition is under the state law. So that's, that's why you see an expanded definition versus what they have put.
How do you use that in motion?
I, I'll read it. So, "Short-term rental owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or a non-owner-occupied property as defined in Section 1 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 64G, included but not limited to an apartment, a house, a cottage, a condominium, or a furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed-and-breakfast establishment where at least one room of the unit is rented to an occupant or suboccupant, and two, all accommodations are reserved in advance, provided, however, that the private owner-occupied property shall be considered a single-family if leased or rented as such." So that's what the state has defined as a short-term rental.
I don't hear where it goes with time limitation.
So there is no time limitation within the definition, but the town does expand on a town, time limitation later in the article that you'll see at town meeting, and we'll get to that a little bit, in a little bit. So a couple other definitions we have, and I'll explain why these are important. Bus station, a location servicing, a point of embark, embarkation for any bus operated by a transit authority. We have GATRA that runs through town here. For routes that allow flag-stop locations where passengers may signal for a bus stop at any point along its designated route, the entire route shall be considered a bus station. That definition will play more into some of the parking requirements for ADUs, and we'll talk about how that could impact the article. And then commuter rail station, any commuter rail station operated by a transit authority with year-round service and trains departing at regular time intervals rather than intermittent season or event-based service. So as we see it now, the train station that is in, on, on Main Street would be considered a seasonal. Okay, so the requirements of the ADU per hour bylaw. Only one accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed per lot as of right. You may apply for additional units, but they would require a special permit through the zoning board of appeals. Both the principal and dwelling ADU may be rented. Rental periods shall not exceed less than six months, or sorry, shall not be less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are prohibited. Neither principal dwelling nor the accessory dwelling unit shall be used as a commercial accommodations at any time, and may not be used as short-term rental units. The exception shall be units rented to summer or seasonal employees as determined by the zoning board of appeals, and included as part of a determination of proposed use as part of a site plan review. The footprint of the new detached accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed that of the principal dwelling. You know, some scenarios where you may see something like that is if you have a, a small principal structure that is two stories or three stories, and then you're proposing a new accessory dwelling that is only one story, that, that could have an effect on that. An existing dwelling in excess of four bedrooms may be converted to two of the existing bedrooms into one accessory unit. Then the size of the accessory dwelling shall be limited to, so letter A here is, we already described that under the state law, and then we expanded to, the total number of bedrooms on the lot may not exceed four bedrooms on a lot of less than 20,000 square feet, and then the maximum number of bedrooms for all units together may not exceed four bedrooms per 20,000 square feet of a lot in the area, and may be less than on in-ground septic disposals. So this is where we get into why we've tried to define what a bus station is. So it says there shall be one off-street parking space per ADU, except no additional off-street parking spaces will be necessary when the lot is in, within a half-mile of a commuter rail station or a bus station. And the reason that we talk about this, and there has to be some type of conversation between us and GATRA about this, is that if GATRA is a flag, if they allow for flag stops, then their entire route is considered a bus station, and that would require this half-mile exemption of no parking along their entire route, and not with the, not just stops that they have determined. So we're still waiting to have a conversation with GATRA about that, but either way, that should not affect the action taken tonight, because it's, it's already enacted through the state law. So again, maintaining a separate entrance, that, that's something that's already included in the state law. We've expanded that the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling units shall have common utilities, including septic electric and water services. Moving on, we talk about some design standards of what the accessory dwelling unit should have. So this is more of a Wareham take on it than it is actual the state requirement on design standards. You know, we, so the dimensional standards are already laid out within the zoning districts of the town bylaw. The architectural effect is something that we've added, and basically all it says is we want the accessory dwelling to look like the principal structure that already exists. And then, so again, we, we talk about how it should have looked the same as the architecture of the primary residence. The density and dimensional regulations, again, those are already stated in the zoning bylaw, and they would have to adhere to the underlying zoning district. And then we talk about the procedures of how you would go about permitting an ADU. Currently, it's being proposed that you would go for a site plan review in front of the zoning board of appeals. Again, site plan review is by right, and any additional dwelling units, again, would have to be under a special permit through the zoning board of appeals, so that's, that's one difference you see. So that, that's what we have proposed, and I feel like I've addressed our differences as compared to what the state has kind of set forth.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, if I could.
Please.
I think the design standards, what the statute says is that we can, they can be subject to reasonable regulations, and I think that's where the design standards will come in. I know you, you have to, you have to tread carefully relative to the statute on design standards, but I think things like bulk and height are important, looking at where it might be positioned, will it have some architectural connection to the existing homes? So there certainly are some parts of the site plan review that we can undertake relative to design standards. I also think that, I think it should be made clear that, of course, anything that's built will be subject to building code, the state building code. For instance, a bedroom must have a window, as an example, among other things. Health, Title V. You, if you are adding bedrooms, then you're gonna have a, and you have an existing septic system, then obviously there has to be a look from the board of health whether that system can accommodate under Title V, the, the addition, and then, of course, fire code, all of those types of regulations. So this is, while the statute says as of right, it does give us, and this bylaw is a good start towards helping us impose some restrictions around that, reasonable restrictions, if you will. What I'm seeing is there are many communities that are right in the same place we are, where they have a draft. Many are looking at, is this ready for prime time, or should we spend more time looking at it? So you've got many towns, just like we are, looking at the two options at this time, because it's a new concept. An as-of-right ADU is something that we haven't generally dealt with before in a residential area, so that's my comment.
So, and on a, on a, on a 30,000-foot level view of this, I think that there is the possibility that this, if this gets approved by town meeting, that it goes to the, and then goes to the attorney general for their review. There's a possibility that the AG's office could say yes to items 1, 3, and 7, and the rest, no. So they can, they can take it in part or, or in whole, as the whole thing. So I think anything that we get in here that we're interested in is good to see if we can get it to fly.
Sure.
So, just so people are aware, that it could, could come back from the attorney general review as being accepted partially.
Yeah, and I would say what we have proposed pretty much reflects the state guidance that we've received. The, the unfortunate thing is the state provided very little guidance for us in this entire process until as of a few weeks ago.
Right.
And as of a few weeks ago, you know, dealing with the holiday season and everything, I, I would say we're, we're pretty much in line with where the state was going.
And I think that it does track, 760 CMR 71 is the new regulations, but the statute also talks about guidelines, which we've yet to see. So this is an ever-evolving process right now, even at the state level. So we're trying to work between the two, the guidelines that don't exist yet, the regulations that are pretty preliminary, so this is a, definitely an evolving process, for sure.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the parts of our new bylaw that I would like to see considered further, but I could see moving forward with it as it's written, is the limitations on, on rental under requirements, item two, that I would, I would like to consider that further. And I think that there, it's, it's a tough thing to do, to, it's, it's basically soothsaying. It's, it's getting out your crystal ball and imagining all these scenarios, and then applying the regulation to it, and, and thinking about what is, what scenarios are gonna be good for the town, and what are not, and, and why. So it's a, it's a process, and it takes many heads, I think, to, to get that really right. And I, I think that what's, what's here is a good place to start, but I think that there are some shortcomings with it, that I think were maybe not considered, just because there are so many possibilities to consider. It's not a, I'm not passing judgment on, on what was written here.
Good, good start, yeah.
A good start.
But it's definitely a good start. I would agree.
Yeah, and I think that the original concept of ADUs, we all hoped that the state might link it more closely to owner-occupied generational housing. That is not what they did. So for us, what we want to try to protect is that the townsfolk can live in these units versus a developer coming in and buying up a bunch of units, and all of a sudden, you've got rental properties that were put in there as of right. I mean, that's kind of my thought. So it's, we, ADUs, in the perfect world, are here for the community, so people can age in place, people can have family members live on their property, so there are lots of very good reasons why ADUs make sense, but it's hard when you have to think about, how could that be jeopardized? How could that be exploited in a way that we may not be happy with, happy about, so.
Yeah, two immediate thoughts. Two immediate thoughts. One is, is that I, I know that I have, have heard people in small New England towns complaining about properties all around them being purchased by people as investment properties, and they get turned into Airbnbs, and so there's no, there's no community left in their neighborhood. They live in a walkable neighborhood, and there are no people. So that's one complaint that I think needs some, some consideration in this. But another thing, and these are completely off the hip and, and not related one to the other, but the other thought that I had was about the housing crisis, and that the housing crisis, in my mind, is not limited to getting people into apartments. It's, it includes things like property values going up and being, people being able to remain in their houses while those property values go up. They don't realize that property value increase until they sell their house, but you don't necessarily want them to sell their house, you want them to be able to stay where they are, if they would like to. So I think that there's, there's a lot more to the housing crisis than, than just apartments and get people in and, so. Those are, those are some of the things that I think need to be considered in this item 2 under requirements, different scenarios. And, and family, family dynamics, family structures that are a little bit more, a little less rigid than they perhaps used to be, and needing to accommodate those. So anyway.
Anyone else?
Anybody else on the board?
No, I'm here the public.
Okay. So we'd like to open it up to the public, if you'd like to come up and, again, identify yourself and spell your name for us. Makes it easier for our note taker.
Donna Fox Rubin. And I just want to put four questions out there before I forget what they are in my head, and then we can go back to them. And perhaps I missed it. Is there a restriction or a regulation on how much land you must have for there to be a primary dwelling? And so you could literally have a postage stamp piece of property.
So according to this-
And only be limited by the square footage of the primary house.
If I, if I can interrupt to, to answer, maybe answer the question.
Can I just put the four questions out before I forget them? So that's the first one. The second one, the discussion about the parking, and if all of Wareham were declared a bus stop because GATRA flags things down, parking has been a significant problem, more in onset than anywhere else. So I would think that would be a huge concern if property owners don't have to provide parking. It may not be a problem in other areas of Wareham, but that whole thing at onset has been a problem forever and will always be. My third question is, six-month minimum for rental. How will we ever be able to monitor that and regulate it and make sure that's really happening? Because my understanding is apartments now need to be registered, and we know a lot of them aren't, we know that. So how do we make sure that it's not a B&amp;B under the table? And then my last question is, do any of these ADUs help us meet our affordable housing quota that we're trying to get to otherwise? So with those four questions out of my head now, can we revisit the questions?
Okay, so, yeah, let's try to work through them. Your first question was for lot sizes pertaining to primary structures. So as you know, the zoning bylaw has zoning, zoning districts, you know, your R30, whatever, those set a zoning limitation to square footage in relation to if you can even build to begin with. And then the, the building of the accessory dwelling also has to meet the zoning requirements of that district as well. So if you have a, a lot in onset and you don't have enough room to even construct an ADU because it doesn't fall within the setbacks, then you wouldn't be able to construct it.
Okay, so there are-
Yeah, dimensional requirements, if you will.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there's the additional-
Sideline setback.
20,000-foot one that-
For bedrooms, though.
Exactly, but that determines-
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms. Right, right.
Your second, sorry, your second question was-
Bus routes.
Bus routes, okay. So that's already determined by the state. They've already given the definition of what a bus station is, and they've already defined if it's a flag stop. Our question right now is to GATRA, do you consider your bus routes to be flag stops and, and flag pickups? And that's where we would have to determine.
So we would prefer they have designated bus stops, probably.
Correct. But if, if they do allow for flag stops, then under the state law, which we cannot regulate, it's, they have a half mile.
So as a town, we would have to revisit, how do we handle these extra cars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your third question was-
The duration of-
Six-month rental.
And how you would, yeah, that's a great thought. It's a great question. How do we-
Enforce it.
Enforce it.
Because we're a seasonal community, and we know how much we grow in the summer. So it's really hard if you can get $1,000 a week in the summertime toward-
Well, that's, that's the sort of scenario that led me to start thinking about people being able to stay in their homes, you know, not have to sell them because the value's gone sky-high and that. I did some work on Nantucket many years, two decades ago, and they allowed ADUs, and a lot of the people there were moving out of their house for the summer, renting it out, paying their mortgage and paying for their kid's college.
For the year.
For the year. By moving out for a couple of months and then moved back in. So technically, I guess you could say it was owner-occupied, and they just did this short-term thing, which, in my mind, was beneficial to the residents of that town. And so that's one thing that I would like to maybe have be considered. And I don't know how you feel about that, but I, I think that that's a scenario that, that is setting up the residents of the town here for potential success. So, anyway, just a thought that I think maybe needs to be stewed.
And then the affordable housing quota.
The, the ADUs do not count towards our quota.
Correct.
So that really doesn't help us much. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Which is a shame.
Do we, do we, have we, we've met that, have we not?
Yeah.
I believe we applied to the state to see if we've met it, and I believe they determined that a few of our, a few of the, a few of the properties we thought would qualify did not.
Okay, so are-
And I believe we are still under.
Are we close?
Very close.
Yes, we are close.
Okay, and as long as, as long as new projects-
Yeah, but if new projects come on board, then-
No, but the new projects, if they're rental projects, they've got a-
Yes.
You know, and multiple units, then they've got a, they've got a-
Affordable component.
Right.
Have an affordable component that at least keeps them-
Yep.
Within the project at that 10%.
Right.
Also, Josh, it doesn't apply for density, generally, I think is part of the challenge, too, but is what it is.
I can pull it right from the state law.
Yeah, it, it doesn't.
With this kind of square footage, you're not, you're talking two occupants. I mean, maybe, you know, a mom and dad and maybe two kids.
Yeah.
You're talking minimal occupancy. But it could potentially be the same strain as all the residential things with the water and the schools and the police and all that. But ideally, I think it's really trying to be targeted towards the elderly parent who can't live alone anymore and that sort of thing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't be shy.
We have two online.
Okay.
I knew it, Jim.
Hello, Jim Munise here, M-U-N-I-S-E.
Thank you.
How do you define as-of-right? Doesn't that mean you don't have to go in front of another board or an authority that it's approved at the permit level?
That was actually a question, I had the same question that my notes say. Doesn't it require site plan review?
It does.
So, so we're requiring site plan review in zones that are, are already zoned for a single-family.
Right.
You're not in a zone that has a single-family, you would have to find another mechanism for getting it permitted.
So the four districts.
But is that, is, is that as-of-right?
Well, site plan review, subject to terms and conditions.
So site plan review, you actually can't deny a project, you can condition it. Special permit is something where you could see an approval or denial. So what the state law says is municipality has the right to enact site plan review on the project in a zone that is zoned for a single-family residence. And then in any other zone, we can enact by special permit. Or if there was a question for more than one accessory dwelling on a lot.
And it's interesting that the code really, really characterized them as protected-use accessory dwelling units. So what they're really saying is we are encouraging our ADUs, and these are some of the ways that we're protecting folks who want to build. So it's not a typical as-of-right as we think about it, but it is, it, it does provide a high level of protection through the zoning process. It's, it's definitely a, kind of a different category, if you will, of what we're used to. As-of-right, special permit, and it specifically says you cannot condition it on a special permit, a waiver, a variance, or anything. Like, it's really, site plan review is what you're, the only way that you can regulate it, if you will, or to review it.
Through site plan review, we, the ZBA would get to condition the approval.
Right, and I, I don't want it to get lost in the weeds, you still need building permits.
Absolutely.
Right, no, it still needs to meet zoning, it still needs to meet all the building codes.
State building codes, yes.
Plumbing code, the electrical code.
Yep, fire, yes, right.
Let me ask, if someone has a, an approval-not-required lot, and he comes in, or they, they come in to the inspectional services office, present a plan, meets all the setbacks, front, rear, side, height, that's an as-of-right project that does need not go in front of any other board, correct? Or incorrect?
An A and R, yeah.
An A and R.
You're just saying for a vacant lot, is that what you're talking about, Jim?
That, that is accurate.
Just an example.
Yeah, that is accurate.
Correct.
So I, I look at it as-of-right on the ADUs, very similar. As long as they go to inspectional services, they review the plans, and they meet the square footage compared to the other house, the front setback, side setback, that it'd be okay. But that's just my, my two cents on this, and I guess we'll see is, on, what's that, Monday?
So just to summarize what you were saying, your concern is with that language of allowed as-of-right?
Yeah, you know, it's as-of-right, but we've got to look at it as a committee.
Yeah, it's in the 853-31.
So now it's almost, it's almost like a special permit, but you're not calling it that, saying it's a site plan review where it has to pass muster for that. But that's just my two cents, you know, from afar.
See the word that says as-of-right on item 1, yeah.
Yep, thank you for your comment, Jim.
Yeah, Jim, exactly, so-
It has to meet all zoning and everything.
Yeah.
It's not, you can do what you want.
So there's no reason, I think, believe that we would have to say as-of-right, because I think what the state is talking about is protected use. As-of-right means something different, but Ken, what's your thought on having spent your life on all of this?
Yeah, and a, a site plan review is for as-of-right uses. That's a, that's a special review that is actually not under state law, but it's been created as a, as a result of communities going ahead and, and for as-of-right units or projects having a review that just, maybe for conditions of, of some type that, that might affect the, the design or the, or the, or the layout of the, of the project.
So do we really have to say as-of-right when we have, I mean, again, to me, it speaks of zoning, a zoning bylaw versus site plan review, but maybe as a lawyer, I'm just splitting hairs here.
Well, the hair splitting is, is what's done a lot of times, and you go to court for that as well, too.
Yeah.
The, the site plan review is, is a, a type of review that doesn't require the full weight of the law on it. And, and, and the conditions that you put on it can be used to, to create the kind of, of project you want, but it doesn't allow you to deny it, so that's why it's as-of-right. You can't deny-
Correct, you can only condition-
The special permit, the site plan review.
Could say as-of-right, subject to site plan review.
I was going to say, maybe there's a parenthetic statement after as-of-right that says, subject to site plan review.
Even though, even though the table-
As well as all the zoning bylaws, Title V and everything else, and you still have to go by all the laws in the books.
Correct, correct.
Put a parenthetical statement after that.
Because the table, the use table does say site plan review.
Right, right.
So, but anyway.
Yeah, that as-of-right is not a carte blanche.
Can be misleading.
Right.
Just come in and start building tomorrow.
Meaning that there are no conditions we can impose, right. Okay, I digress.
Anybody else?
More questions?
Oh, we had another person online. We'll take them, and then we'll come back to you.
Hi, Nadia Melim, M-E-L-I-M.
Thank you.
I live at 35 Howard Street, can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So I spent some time today looking at EOHLC's guidance for this new law, and I kind of first want to just piggyback on Jim's question, because they specifically bring up the question of, should towns be requiring site plan review for an ADU if they don't require it for a new construction, single-family home? So that might just be something the, the board might want to take into consideration. I don't, I think you said, Jane, that the AG can reject parts of this without rejecting the whole thing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, great. So that, that was something that EOHLC flagged as a potential issue.
We just, go ahead, sorry.
The other, the reason I raised my hand was related to the language in there about the architectural character of the building, which seemed kind of vague and not what the law, I think they call it, clear and objective regulations, in terms of like what they, what the, what the law considered to be allowable were very clear requirements versus what, and it was only on the screen for a moment, I couldn't find the proposed bylaw online earlier today, but it's just seemed like that one also would either need to be removed or tightened up. And I also don't know that it was necessary to have kind of a definition of what the building should look like, since we don't really have that in our zoning as a whole. So it seemed like an extra regulation getting put on an ADU that wouldn't have been put on a, a regular, single-family home, which the spirit of this whole Affordable Housing Act was to not add extra requirements onto an ADU that a single-family wouldn't be required to meet.
Yeah, and the regulations actually cover that. Any design standard that would not be applied to a single-family residential dwelling in the single-family residential zoning district in which the protected AD use is located, or so restrictive, excessive burdensome, or arbitrary that prohibits, renders infeasible, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I guess that kind of qualifies as ironic. We're, we're asking them to, to match the original dwelling, but we're being told that unless there's regulation on the original dwelling, that you can't apply it to the ADU.
Right.
So, yeah, it's a little catch-22-ish. And I, I think that the intent here with the design standards is that they're that, they're standards, they're not regulations, and it's, it's just giving some guidance to the, the potential applicant that this is what we're looking for, you know.
And in the state regulations, again, we would be subject to the state right, the state code, these regulations anyway, they have similar dimensional standards, they say the same thing. You cannot increase any dimensional standards. You have to look at the district it's in, and what are the dimensional standards for these residential districts? So, you can't, with an ADU, you cannot create your own. It is, you are, what district are you in, what are the requirements dimensionally, and that's what you.
And that's the same.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, I think, what we're aiming at here, that the same zoning requirements apply to anything new.
Apply to the ADU, yeah.
But I think that Ms. Melim's question was about the architectural standards, but I think it's.
Yeah, I mean, it applies to both the kind of architectural standards and the site plan review, right? So.
Yeah, well, the A and R, we do see A and Rs come before us, so, for residential districts. So, I don't think that that's really applying a standard that's not applied.
Okay, I thought someone had mentioned earlier that that wasn't required for a new construction, single-family.
Yeah, A and Rs do come before us, so.
Okay.
And last point I'll make on the regs, which are not the guidelines, which are coming later, what they say is that they will, may clarify and provide examples of what constitutes unreasonable regulations in the guidelines that don't exist yet.
Yeah, right. The state still owes us some information that we'll add to this.
And I suspect we will have modifications to these, this code.
I think the whole thing is both from our perspective and from the state's, and so.
Yeah.
This will not be a one-and-done thing, so. Anybody else? One at a time. The red shirt, or burgundy shirt, how about that? State your name and spell it for us to start.
Hi, Judith Westgate, W E S T G A T.
Thank you.
So, I have lots of questions, but I won't throw them all out tonight. So, I wondered if, I worry about the impact on the budget, just because we're going to be increasing our population with the ADUs. So, and obviously, the school is the biggest part of our budget. So, is it possible to limit the ADUs to one bedroom, which would assumably have lots of an impact on the school? My other question has to do with, I understand that tiny homes can be on wheels, and that makes them vehicles, and then they're not taxed as, they don't have real estate tax. So, we're going to get less revenue for the extra expense on the budget. So, can we limit and say that we, you know, the ADUs have to be on a foundation and not on wheels? Again, I know, you probably don't know the answers, because we don't know what we can do, I get that. And then I also wondered about, can we limit the number of ADUs, like per an area of town? Because when you talk about the look of a community and the look of a neighborhood, put too many of them in. I mean, I can think of lots of, lots in my neighborhood that if they all had them, we have a really different neighborhood. Lots more cars, lots more people. So, I'm a little concerned about it from a neighborhood look and from a budgetary, what it does to our budget, which is always a concern. So, that, those are my questions. And you may not have answers, because I understand that what we're doing is drafting something that you have no idea what the limits on it are.
From the state.
Yeah, from the state.
Yeah, that's correct. But these are all good questions, and ones that we'll need to sort of either flesh out now or flesh out in the near future of what, how we respond to them.
And we're going to talk about the moratorium after?
Yeah, we'll talk about the moratorium after. In fact, in thinking about it, I don't think that, while these two articles on the agenda tonight, items two and three, are related, I don't think that one, how we vote on one determines how we vote on the other. I think we could, we could vote yes on the accessory dwelling bylaw that, under the town's bylaw. And we could also vote on putting the moratorium on, because the attorney general could come back and tell us one thing or the other, and it would sort of override whatever we vote. So, we could still say yes to both of these. The new bylaw from, on the town's language and the moratorium.
I guess I do have one other sort of general question, and I think it's been discussed, and I may not just have understood it. So, when the ADUs go in, do they have to meet town zoning laws?
Yes.
They have to meet town, like, when 40B goes in, it doesn't have to meet town zoning laws, correct?
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
40B is subject to going through an approvals process that, I think there's this perception that 40B just goes through. And that's not entirely true. 40Bs get heavily conditioned. The state gives them some passes, but towns are allowed to condition them. And so, there is, there are things that can be controlled.
Not as of right, right. But things like density, you can increase the density level in many 40B projects. So, there's some relief, if you will, that you get relative to a 40B project.
Right, a 40B project is not quite as easy as just go in and, you know, build thousands of units on a 20,000 square foot.
But once approved, they don't have to follow things like setbacks and things like that.
If they're given approval to do that. But these ADUs have to follow the local zoning. They also have to follow the building code, so.
Health code, Title V, all of that, well placement.
But a lot of those are state level, right? So, that's what I was trying to clarify.
State building code, right.
Right. But town zoning bylaws would also have to be met with the ADUs. In other words, setbacks and those sorts of things.
So, the, your, yes, but to go to your question, your second question, which was about tiny homes and wheels versus foundations, I think that this ADU bylaw is not taking into account tiny homes on wheels, which, as you pointed out, are personal property, they're not real estate, they're not subject to the building code, and that's the whole point of putting them on wheels. And they have their issues, particularly pertaining to septic and hooking up to septic. And that's something that I don't know the answer to, but I know that it's what tiny homeowners grapple with, getting approval. Because, you know, how do they hook into septic? What do they do with their septicage? So, I don't think that a tiny home on wheels would actually fit within the requirements of these, this ADU bylaw.
You don't think they're allowed at all?
I don't, I think it's a separate issue. I don't think that tiny homes are what are in mind for this ADU.
Dwelling units, right.
I think that they're not considered dwelling units, they're considered personal property.
Because they are.
It's the same issue with mobile homes.
It's kind of a.
And how they count.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
That they're on wheels, and so they're not considered real estate, they're considered personal property.
Because until you take the wheels off, they're not considered fixtures on the property, and therefore not real estate. What I will point out is the new code for ADUs specifically says modular homes, which is the prefab homes, are permitted. So, I think it's interesting that they happen to say that, which seems like someone there is making a distinction between mobile homes on wheels, trailers, whatever, correct, and modular homes that are on a foundation.
Right, and modular homes are just something that is built off-site and brought to the site and put on a foundation. And actually, modular homes, as an architect, I would say that modular homes can oftentimes be better built than something that's stick-built in the field, because it's built under controlled conditions. And, yeah, oftentimes, it's better. But it's got to be able to withstand going over the road, it's got to be the right dimensions to go over the road, so those are some of the limitations. That was a complete aside.
Very educational, thank you.
I'd like to make the comment that I like your comment also about the generational concept, and, you know, like, if we could limit it, limit the ADUs to those kinds of uses, you know, that the townspeople might need, as opposed to just building more homes on apartments.
Well, it's clear that you're worried about the budget and school population, and I understand that. I get the concern there. Yeah, I mean, I think that some of the potential uses for these ADUs needs, I think, further exploration, because it could be that generational thing, but it could also be that somebody, as I said, they rented out short-term for the summer, and then they move back into it, and it allows them to stay put. So, that's not even a generational thing, but it's an affordability thing. So, anyway.
So, can we, can the town then limit the allowance of ADUs for certain reasons?
No, I don't.
No, we're not allowed to.
Yeah, the statute's pretty clear that you cannot. It was in the original way back, one of the, there were several versions, three or four years ago, but unfortunately, they did not make it through the legislature.
Which makes me wonder if this item two, is it item two? Will get past scrutiny. And I think we just, if it doesn't, or it does in part, I think we need to keep working on that one. And going back to it, even if it passes the way it is, I think it could use some further consideration and adjusting. And if only part of it or none of it is allowed, then we really need to reassess it and see what we can, what we can get through the state.
And what you can get through, the present AG, Attorney General, might get, might not be able to get through, you get through someone else.
Never know.
That's quite possible, right, exactly.
I know there are others that wanted to speak.
Yes.
Just before we take another question, there was a question about where you can find the town meeting warrant article. And that is located, it's one of the main billboards on the town website, and there is also a link to it under the town clerk's office page, just for people who are looking for what is being proposed.
Thank you.
And, front row, you've had your hand up.
Just had a quick question, I might have missed it, but.
If you could first identify yourself and spell your name.
I'm Lucille Dodson.
Okay.
And I live in Farring Street, was a bit, well, where he is. So, I might have missed this, but with the ADUs, do they get their utilities from the main house, or can they get their, like, separate, you know, like a separate sewer?
So, that was actually, that was actually one of the items that says that they need to be, they need to get their, their utilities from the mains, it needs to be one system for both the ADU and the main house.
I don't see how anybody is going to want to do that and then rent out, you know, and have their, we all know, everybody on all the, if you're on Facebook at all, in every community, people are going crazy with the usage, you know, of the cost of utilities, whether it's gas, electric. So, who in their right mind would want to build one of these things and then have all that put, added on to their own house bill?
I'm gonna speculate here that the thinking behind that is not wanting to see these ADUs sectioned off from the main house and considered two dwellings in the future, which, if they have separate utilities, would facilitate.
I understand that, but then again, if you're going to go to rent it, if it's not going to be for a family member, and you're gonna, you know, then it's like you're going to have to charge this ridiculous amount of money for rent to cover the additional water, sewer, electric, whatever.
That's correct.
Something that definitely needs consideration.
Ken, can I ask, or Josh, again, if, in Massachusetts, I haven't checked that in a while, but if you have a rental unit and you want to charge utilities, let's say you have two units, you, and you only have one service, you have to sub-meter in order to charge the tenant. So, I don't know, Josh and Ken, was this something that you all put together, or was it, did it come from, I don't, I didn't remember seeing it in the law?
It wasn't in the law, no.
Okay.
Well, this doesn't get that specific, but maybe sub-metering is something that could be allowed, so that's exactly what you're talking about. It seems kind of crazy.
It's expensive to put a sub-meter in, but that is one way around it. Ken, do you, was this?
And would it be one service coming into the property?
Yeah. I think the law said you could do separate utilities, but I'd have to look at it again, the regs.
I believe, I believe it does.
Yeah.
It says that you can do separate utilities?
Yeah, yeah.
My guess is that.
Do you legally impose that to make it one utility service?
I think that's what this is aiming to do.
Mm-hmm.
And as I speculate, as I said, my speculation is that the intent is to not, to make it so that it's difficult to split it into two separate dwellings, like sell the ADU as a standalone, and it could get its own ADU.
I can see how they could be worded where, you know, even if they allowed your own, you know, septic and whatever, that it doesn't get sold separately, that it has to go as a bundle, you know what I mean?
Right, well, and I also think that it could wreak havoc with the sewer system and having to put in separate stubs and.
And what, sorry, what the code, the new code says is utilities, safety, and emergency access. Any requirement concerning utilities, safety, and emergency access that is more restricted than state requirements. So, we might run into a little bit of a problem there. But.
Okay, thanks.
So.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, as you can see, it's a work in progress, yeah.
Anybody else?
And that was my question about the telephones.
Okay.
Bill Lockwood, L L C K W O O D. Want to speak to the site plan review versus special permit. It seems to be a distinction without a difference. And you have applied it universally across anything that you didn't prohibit outright.
Well, so the special permit is for multiple.
No, there are no special permits at all. It's all site plan review, or no.
The SPZ.
Yeah, because it's only in the residential districts.
Well, and it's no in, interestingly, the one multifamily district that we have.
Multiple, the four.
The MR district, it's prohibited under your table.
To do an ADU, a single ADU.
Yeah, which I find curious.
I didn't read it.
I think that's what the statute says, though, that it's really, that multiple units is not what's contemplated under this, but again, we're all.
It's exactly what's contemplated under this.
Well, no, I mean, the ADU creates multiple units, but to take a multiple-unit building and then do an ADU, I just, I'd have to look at that.
Well, it's a multiple-unit district.
Correct.
By definition, otherwise, why have it?
That's right.
So, I think that may suggest some tweaking there.
Okay.
Also, residential, single-family residential use is permitted in a number of the commercial districts. And why are those commercial districts defrauded from taking advantage of the ADU? If it's a single-family use in a commercial district.
I'll have to look.
You can?
I'm looking at your proposed table 330.
Well, what it, what the statute says.
Well, it could be. Came out of your office, so.
What the statute says, which is 48, Section 3, says that no zoning ordinance or bylaw, et cetera, so prohibit or reasonably restrict, et cetera.
A little outdated version.
Oh, good.
Single accessory dwelling, or the rental, are in a single-family residential zoning district. So, it really is just single-family residential zoning districts.
I think that may answer a lot of your concerns.
It also fixes a number of the format questions that.
I need that back, but just for your reference, the bottom of the sheet there.
The bottom of the sheet is.
So, it really is just, it's just single.
Accessory use, well, regulations, okay.
Yeah, so the version you're referencing is out of date, and I think it addresses a few of the concerns.
There were iterations up until the day before.
My primary point, being that site plan review is not significantly different from a special permit. And if you were constructing a byright. a special permit. And if you were constructing a by-right project in any of these districts, it would go straight to the building, building department, and it would be subject to zoning setbacks, density, all those things would be subject to review. And I'm not sure what the imposition of the zoning board into that process, other than if there is some exemption needed, and what is the benefit of that. And I think that goes, flies in the face of the spirit of the state mandate, that it be a by-right project.
I will just mention that in some of the webinars that the state has hosted, they gave communities a guidance that is something that you can do under site plan review.
They clearly say that.
And then, I think one of the things that we do gain out of it is, in the new regulations that they are imposing under the state law, they want communities to track annually how many ADUs are being proposed. And this would give the town a mechanism to do that.
Correct.
For specific ADU units.
I think that mechanism would exist through the building permit process.
Maybe. Yeah, it's hard.
It's a good comment.
Yeah, for sure.
We need a couple of touch points.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that was good input. Thank you.
I would like to say that the state seemed rushed on their guidance for this, almost to the point of when it was actually signed into law, they had zero guidance at all. And a few of the people that I saw presentations from seem to be under the same pressure that our communities were on, hey, we have regulations, they're being drafted, not, we have drafted regulations, and here's how they tie into the law that was just passed.
And there's actually a meeting on Friday, I'm gonna attend a virtual meeting with the state, so there's a continuing dialogue going on.
Yeah, but it's not necessarily a new dialogue, because I'm currently working on two ADUs in different municipalities, which have been on the books for several years. Their zoning bylaws, so, and they're effectively the same thing as the state suggestions.
That's good, yeah.
It's quite possible that the state drew there from these municipalities.
It could, could well be.
Yeah, it's quite possible.
There's a lot of borrowing going on.
Yes, happens at all levels.
Sure does.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Bill.
Anyone else?
I think, go ahead. That's you.
Thank you.
John?
Good evening. John Churchill, C-H-U-R-C-H-I-L-L, 14 Fellowship Circle, also the owner of J.C. Engineering on Cranberry Highway. So, we are gonna be dealing with these regulations as soon as they're in place. We're already dealing with them in communities born Plymouth, down Cape Cod, they have these enacted. So, I want to say, great first crack at them. Actually, these regulations are in line with other communities in other towns. They look very, they look great to me. There's a couple of housekeeping items that I wouldn't know how to advise a client, so I'd like to flush those out now, in case they do get approved. So, basically, the underlining zoning district, and again, this is my zoning bylaw on my phone, so, underlining zoning district, as you know, we have a lot of undersized lots as well in town, and they believe the building commissioner about four or five years ago addressed that under Section 628, existing small lots. So, you might want to say underlining zoning district or Section 628, small lots, because underlying zoning district, you're talking R-60, R-130, you're talking, those areas have, you know, 10,000 square foot lots, 12,000 square foot lots. You might have a 2434 colonial, whatever, and they want to put a, put a garage, maybe a 20 by 20 garage on their house to allow a dwelling unit above a garage, say, or even a dwelling unit. So, we would have to meet, in R-130, we would have to meet a 100-foot zoning setback.
Yeah.
And we would have to meet a 30-foot side setback. Well, that's impossible on a 100 by 100 lot. So, that's why they created Section 628, the existing small lots, for those, as well as the benefit is they also introduced the FAR, which is floor area regulation in the existing small lots. So, now you regulate floor area in relationship to the size of the lot. So, we're not regulating that, not that I love regulations, as you know. However, you know, I want to make sure that we can advise, I'm not saying I love regulations, but, you know, over-regulate, as I have to inform my clients, that basically, there's a, there's a controversy, if you will, in the bylaw, and that's, that's tough.
I think the FAR needs some review.
Yeah, the FAR does, but it's part of that existing small lot section, the 628.
Yes, yeah.
So, if we're gonna say, you know, the underlying zoning district, and so, basically, if someone wants to put a, an addition on their house, they have to meet the, you're gonna go in front of the zoning board appeals, or what you would do is it's gonna be a two-step process. If my client came to me, I would say, put your garage addition on, under the 628, and then let's go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for living space above. So, now, it's, I gotta go, I gotta advise for two permits, when I'd rather just file for one.
Not as efficient.
No, it's definitely not. So, that's the first.
Okay, so we should look at that. Helpful.
Secondly, under 625, it's the, actually, 620, 625, accessory buildings. So, I know a lot, we really talk about accessory buildings, I'm assuming this is gonna fall under an accessory building criteria, under the zoning setbacks, because that's, you're seeing the underlying zoning district, accessory buildings. Item under there, which we have not been able to find at town meeting, is item five, maximum size of an accessory building shall be 30 by 30 or 900 square feet. I've yet to find that, the town clerk has no record of approval of that. So, we've actually, have talked to, we've spoken to the building inspector as well, and so, I think we should really look at this, 'cause when you read that as well, I look at 900 square feet. Well, you're talking, is that included, is that the garage in the 900 square feet above, or is that 900 square feet total? So, you have to do a 450 square foot garage with a 450 square foot above. However, we, in my opinion, is something to look at before town meeting, is I don't believe we've ever actually voted item five at town meeting. Six, that's 625.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it can be looked at before town meeting in.
Well, subsection.
Seven days.
Well, I'm saying, you probably talked to the town clerk, and she has no record of ever voting that in, unless we changed it in November, 'cause we brought this to the attention of, but I didn't go to a November town meeting. So, I don't know if we struck that in November, but anybody out of town, or anybody that doesn't deal with our office, believes that that's correct. However, it's not, it's not official. So, if you're gonna make it official, maybe that's the time, and if you do make that official, it's 900 square feet from accessory building, the maximum size. I would say 900 square feet footprint, I wouldn't say 900 square feet living, 'cause you would want a garage with a room above, I would think. So, if you say accessory, when that says 30 by 30 or 900 square feet, it says maximum size, doesn't say.
Yeah, the question is an accessory unit, is it an ADU?
Versus an ADU, and maybe there needs to be a distinction.
So, at least there has to be a distinction between the two.
Between an accessory building and an ADU.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Even though the word accessory is in both of them, but.
So, if I do a detached garage, where am I, what am I following? I would follow, I would follow, I would tell my client accessory, accessory structure. So, I would follow the table of accessory structure.
Yeah.
And then I would go down, and then they're gonna say the 900 square feet, and I'm gonna say that doesn't apply, 'cause I can't find town meeting, the vote at town meeting for that. However, but people, other firms and other clients and other homeowners are gonna look at that and say 900 square feet, and the building inspector in town reads this to the T.
Yeah.
So, that says 900 square feet, he may say, nope, 30 by 30, 900 square feet, that's all you get. There's no two-story on that. So, he may, he may take that as living space, or total space, including garage space. So, that's all. I just want to make sure that we, those are the two items that if I looked at this and someone came to my office, I would have a little bit, and I ran this through some of my engineers as well, and they say the same thing, so.
Very helpful.
Boots on the ground, you've been applying this, so it's really helpful to hear from you.
Yeah, no, we would like to get it done right the first time, so we know how to advise our clients, you know?
Yeah, no, it's great to hear. I know when you.
Take your time.
When you apply this stuff, you learn stuff about.
We get a lot of questions, as you know. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Got anybody else? You got one?
Annie Hayes, A-N-N-I-E-H-A-Y-E-S.
Thank you.
I am recalling that it was recently that we had a moratorium on building because of having a dearth of sewage treatment, and.
She's not correct, Annie.
That comes along, I think I've been here eight years, and it seems like it comes along maybe every four years, a big bill. Maybe that's not quite correct, but, and I don't think it's gonna get smaller, because we're gonna have more filtering probably, and growth doesn't seem to abate. But, this new ability to have smaller ADUs and have, you know, how much more sewage to deal with, it seems like there's, there are communities that could be really burdened by having unlimited ADUs and not having the capacity without great expense and maybe a real financial hardship. So, does that make sense?
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Is the moratorium?
I don't know the, how applicable it is, the question, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm definitely not one to speak for the sewer commission, but I believe the moratorium was lifted for adding new properties to the system, and that was due to work from the new director of the control facility.
Did that only apply to big projects? And furthermore, I think that there are so many locations where the houses are not on the.
Sewer.
Municipal sewer.
Right, and I think it's important to know that, you know, the state already says these new ADUs have to meet all the other general laws or bylaws that have been acted.
Right, so if you can't, right, so if you can't, if you can't meet, if there's, if there's no sewage available to you, and there's sewer in the area, then you, you couldn't build a single-family house, you can't build an ADU.
You have a three-bit septic, and you have three bits.
Then just normal logic, normal logic here. The other thing is, I thought I heard that an owner could not live in the ADU. The owner of the property could not live, did I hear that?
No.
I don't think that's true.
Okay, all right. So, it could, it's really, it can be like an, it could be like an in-law apartment kind of situation, and that's where you're talking about families being able to stay together generationally, because the owner of a house can move into an ADU and let the kids live in the house, that kind of thing, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else?
Does Ken want to add anything?
Ken, do you want to add anything?
No, other than that, there are a lot of good comments that have come up, and I think one of the things you could do is to vote on both the moratorium and the ADU bylaw, and have them both come before town meeting, because, and see if they would vote them in as well, too, because one doesn't negate the other.
Right.
Except, except that the moratorium puts a hold on the ADU bylaw until such, until such time as a new article is brought before town meeting with the changes you might want to see in it.
Right. So, the, the moratorium would sort of override or table the, the town dwelling unit bylaw?
That's right, but you could have it in place and have the Attorney General review it and mark it up, and give us some direction on the bylaw itself.
And we could be.
Then we could be working on revisions to it.
For town meeting.
Exactly.
For a subsequent town meeting before the one-year moratorium is up.
That's right. It could be at the, it could be at the annual town meeting in April, is possible, or more than likely, and at the fall town meeting before the period is up. However, the state law, it becomes enacted in February 7th, I believe.
Second.
So, it happens before a town meeting can take place again.
Right, but it happens after this upcoming town, special town meeting.
Right.
Yeah. And Ken, the state has acknowledged that, that a moratorium may be put in place. And I think the only caveat, they say, is that the town has to be working towards putting together a final one, and I think, frankly, you all have done a great job getting us to where we are, 'cause I think that it's very defensible, if we're challenged, that we are working very hard towards getting this regulation in place, 'cause you, you know, there's always the risk of someone sues us and says, you're preventing me from moving forward. But, I certainly think that we at least have a defense that could be raised, that we are working towards putting together a final, you know, a final regulation.
That's right.
Okay.
So.
Moratorium is good if there's a time limit on it as well, too.
Yes, yes.
We have a one-year time limit, and within that one year, we can approach the bylaw again, and get it, get it straight, hopefully with some comments and input from the Attorney General, and the state in the guidelines.
Okay. Right. So, we had another person in the audience who'd like to speak.
Nancy Kress, K-R-E-S-S, I live on Bush Street. I'm wondering if the as-of-right language applies to only conforming lots, or does it also apply to non-conforming pre-existing lots?
I think that's where, is it 628? I don't remember the numbers well, but John Churchill was just talking about it. 628 is for undersized lots, and there are bylaws in place for undersized lots. That was, that's where you could look.
Oh, okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Ken's idea is a good one.
So, I think we've, I think we've exhausted all the questions from the audience, am I correct? Seeing no more hands go up, and seeing none online?
Making motion to close the hearing on Article 3.
All those in favor?
Like the FT stack.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobard, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Okay, so, we've closed the hearing on.
One and three.
Two and three. Do you, you just closed it on three?
Closed one and three.
One and three. We tabled two.
Yeah.
Well, one, we've already closed.
Right, one and three are closed, two is tabled.
Okay, correct, okay. We just closed two, three.
Correct.
So.
Gets us to two.
Do we want to?
No, you need to take an action on three first.
Take a vote on three.
We do, right. So, motion to, to refer this to town meeting.
As, as, with a favorable recommendation.
Correct, with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Like the FT stack.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobard, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Okay, so, we're back to Article, to second article.
Making motion to take second article off the table?
It was off the table, put it back on the table.
Hmm? It was on the table.
Yes.
Take it back off of discussion.
Yes, got it. Okay.
All those in favor?
Like the FT stack.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobard, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. Okay, so, Article 2 is on the table, and Article 2.
It's off the table, up for discussion.
Yes, it's up for discussion, right. And shall I reread?
Sure.
What Article 2 is, to see if the town will vote to put a one-year moratorium on ADUs while the state proceeds to write regulations and guidance on the implementation of the Affordable Homes Act. So, this is to take the state regulation, which will be, which goes into effect on February.
Second.
Second, and seventh. Okay, February 7th.
Okay. I saw the second, but anyway.
The second is a Sunday, so.
Okay, so it's 7th, okay.
And puts that under a moratorium for the town. So, it's, it's related, but somewhat distinct from Article 3, which we just voted to recommend.
Because the guidance has not been written.
Correct.
The regulation are preliminary, so, there's more to come.
Guidance and regulation from the state.
From the state, exactly.
So, any board discussion? Any audience questions, comments?
Okay, so, I'm not clear what the moratorium does.
Can you identify yourself again?
Oh, sorry, right. Judith Westgate.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, right, Judith Westgate, W-E-S-T-G-A-T-E.
Thank you.
So, the law goes into effect in February, but if we, if the, at town meeting, they vote a moratorium, that means that it doesn't go into effect for where, is that what that means?
For a year.
It's on hold for a year.
Okay. Not just doing the zoning bylaws, but the actual law does not go into effect for a year.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
And you're saying you can put both of these things before town meeting?
Well, so, we may get shot down on the moratorium, in which case, we'd like to have our zoning bylaw in place. It may get shot down, too, but we're just trying to do whatever we can to have a little bit of town control over what's happening.
So, you'll have the moratorium thing voted on first?
Doesn't matter, we could vote on both of them simultaneously.
I think town meeting is actually a lottery on how the articles are presented.
Correct. And I think that these can be taken separately, and they could both be voted favorably, and we'd be okay. I don't think that it would cause, you know, any problems. One thing that, if the, if the moratorium gets approved, and also, the dwelling unit bylaw that we're proposing gets approved, then we've got the bylaw in place for whenever the moratorium goes off the table, you know, is no longer in place, after that year passes.
Or less.
Or less, if it gets rejected by the attorney general.
We could change it spring town meeting, fall town meeting.
Right, and we could be, we could continue working on our town bylaws for ADUs in the interim.
And then, you would come back to town meeting with additional...
Subsequent changes, yeah. But I think having both of these things approved just gives us a little bit more potential protection.
It protects us more, and it also gives us a unique scenario where we're gonna force the AG to actually review what we're proposing in the bylaw, and make note on that as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can take in the town's consideration of, you know, the presentations, the questions that people have brought before us, but we also have the time to interpret how the AG feels about the bylaw that we've put forward.
Before it's put into place.
Yeah, they may say yes to part of it, or no to all of it. That's what we deal with.
I will say that there are towns that have taken just the state law that was presented, and created a bylaw of that, and voted for them at their fall town meetings, so, just a few months ago. So, there are communities that have taken that approach, of just simply taking what was presented, turning that into a bylaw, and then submitting that to the AG.
Which they should approve.
You would hope they would approve that one.
But you never know. Well, and frankly, they could be giving it more consideration, and realize that they had some things that, in their language, that they wanna change, so...
The process was rushed, so, never know.
It's very fluid.
Anybody else?
I think we're ready to decide how we...
No more hands.
What our recommendation is to...
Oh, sure.
Jim.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Josh Crabbe, C-R-A-B-E, he isn't boy, he isn't boy.
Thank you.
I just wanted to voice a quick opinion on this, I'm a municipal employee in another town. You know, I've seen these, these ADUs have come up a lot lately, and I think, you know, our town is on the right path with the bylaw, and getting this in place, but I don't think the right move is to instill a moratorium for a year. I like the idea of trying to force the attorney general to look at our scenario, so, my proposal would be to put forth this ADU law, and have the moratorium, you know, have it contingent, you know, the ADU law going into effect, contingent on the attorney general's approval of our bylaws. And bylaws can always be amended. We revise them all the time in municipal government. We have a good baseline. ADUs are not new, they're new to Massachusetts, but they're not new to the country. It's not like we're looking at recreational cannabis sales, which was a new thing for the entire country. Accessory dwelling units have been around for a while, so I just, I think, moving forward is the right direction for us and our residents, and trying to have that, you know, keep our families home, and try to help our elderly parents, and, you know, I just think it's the right thing for us to do, and I would hate to see this thing dragged out longer when we have an opportunity to be at the forefront of this movement. So, but, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, like, do we have anybody else online? No? Okay.
Make a motion, we close the hearing on Article 2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobert, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Make a motion, we sent a town meeting... An opinion to approve this article.
Second.
Not, not, don't like the wording?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, what the gentleman was just saying, but you really can't do that, which is moratorium if the AG doesn't like it, so, you can't really, I don't think, I think that'd be difficult, but...
Favorable action.
So, I think, isn't it to, to present this at town meeting?
Favorable, favorable action.
Yeah, for favorable action.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, my motion, that would be the motion, I would think, we'd wanna, right.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobert, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Ken, I should've asked you before we went through this, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. That's fine, favorable action is what you wanted to do.
Yeah, exactly, okay, good. Glad you're happy.
Okay, moving right along. Upcoming schedule, nothing new.
Not tonight, anyway.
Since the Fearing Hill Solar Project was scheduled for continuation to January 13th...
Yep.
I don't know if I'm jumping ahead on the agenda on this one, but I think it'd be appropriate for a quick get-together before town meeting at the school, to vote the extension of the, of the project to January 27th hearing.
Why don't we do that now, Ken?
Because it isn't a date. I'm not sure about taking it out of sequence.
Yeah, right, it has to be on the agenda.
Well, and it's, it's not on the agenda to consider that, and the proponent is not here and available and aware that we're talking about it, so, I think if we do it on the 13th...
Correct.
Can we have him on Zoom?
Can we get him on Zoom?
Can we get Joe on Zoom?
It's not on the agenda, though.
You mean on the 13th?
On the 13th.
On the 13th, we'll need him.
I believe he is willing to attend your meeting on the 13th.
Correct, yes.
We could do it by Zoom if it's just to change the date.
Right.
Instead of dragging him all the way down here.
Right.
Right.
Drag him down anyway. Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So, Ken, will you reach out to him?
Yes, I can set it up on Zoom, I think on, on, on somebody's phone, I think can be done that way.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, we'll have him on the...
On the chair's phone, probably, on Carl's phone.
Yeah.
And it would be on the 30th?
27th.
27th.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, hold on one second.
Ken, would this be a separate link, or would this be your original Zoom link posted on your agenda?
This would be a separate link.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't have to set up your system at the, at the school cafeteria.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
Good question.
Yep.
Are we good?
We're gonna go that. Yeah, we're good.
So, I just have one thing I wanna bring before the board as well. We have a potential project coming before the planning board, and Carl has asked that, you know, new applications, you know, we kinda set up the timeframe of...
The six-week, yeah.
Right. This one is a little unique, because our normal peer review consultant, Allen Majors, has a conflict with the proposed project coming before you. So, Ken and I have identified a different engineering company who has done work for the town historically, and that we feel is confident, or we are confident in their ability to review projects, other than Allen and Majors.
Yeah.
So, I would like to send you guys some information about the pending project that's going to be coming before you. They're also going to be filing with the conservation department at the same time.
Excuse me.
And they are, we are, they are aware that there is a peer review process, and what they would like to do is get that started and funded early, so that, you know, your first hearings are kind of...
Who is that? Who is that?
So, let me send you a little bit of information on the company that we found to do that work, and the proposal that's coming before you.
Okay.
At 53G.
We assume 53G you're talking about.
Yeah, oh, yes, sorry, correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Josh, have you done the updates I gave you on the 53G?
Oh, yes, so, I spoke to town council, he said that it would be easy enough just to make a list of them, and for the planning board to vote on that list as an entirety, instead of individually.
So, take those three that I gave you, and add my next take, and make it one.
Yeah, so, yeah, his recommendation is, don't worry about handling them individually, create a sheet, and say, we're acting in favor of the sheet.
All of them. Okay, I'll take care of that.
Yeah, all right.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mike Baptiste.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Cobert, aye.
Gleason, aye.
Thanks, Ken, for hanging out with us.